Not to break anything I bang on. Uh, Councilman Hay, would you give us a, lead us in a word of prayer?
Yes, sir. God, we, uh, we come to you, God, and thank you for all the men and women that work at this city, Lord God, that you, you bless them on their comings and goings, Father, and everything that they do, Father. May you protect them, Father, and we, we're asking for the protection over this city council, Father, and that all decisions, Father, and all words that are, that are shared, Father, and everything that is shared up here, Lord God, be your message and not ours. God, we just, uh, we, uh, we know what time of season it is, Father. This is the time that we are celebrating the birth of your son, Jesus Christ. Father, we, we know that there are people out here, Father, that need you in their lives. We're just asking, Father, that, that, that their sins be forgiven and everything that they do, Father, may they be, may they come to you. And God, everyone that's up here on this, this deal, Father, may they have a blessed Christmas, a happy new year, Father, and, and again, Father, we just ask for protection in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Everyone be seated. All right, first on the agenda for today would be the update on the project, uh, Logical Location by Odessa Development Corporation Board for an update on Project James Kirk. There you are.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Uh, here to give you an update on the project Logical Location. We had been doing due diligence on that project for several months and information was not given to us enough information during the due diligence process. And, uh, we had a call with three different attorneys, uh, on a, um, meets call where we pretty much found out that the receiver of the property was not, not even aware that we were possibly going to purchase this property for this project. And, and we decided to not move forward with the project altogether. Voted in the last meeting, last ODC meeting to not move forward at all with this project. I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Dr. Kirk, thank you. I wanted closure on that. I'm glad that that's what you're bringing to us today. Back on October twenty-second, uh, in the previous council that, that I belong to, Mr. Harry brought a bunch of papers with him indicating that he had enough information to present to the council that things were ready to move forward with that project. And, uh, that seemed to have been, uh, different than what you had reported to us. And I just wanted to find out, did you all ever get the same stuff he had or?
Uh, he apparently had some environmental studies that, that they had done, more, more environmental studies to verify everything. But what he didn't know was, uh, the, the bank receiver that was trying to, that, that we had never been in communication with, uh, only the other entity was in communication with him. Had no idea that we were, we were in the process of being the, the sole purchaser of that project as a public, private, public partnership with them. They had no idea about that. He, Dr. Uh, Tim Harry did not know about that. And when we had this call meeting, we found out immediately the, the week of our ODC meeting. And at that point, we voted unanimously to, to not move forward with that process.
Right, and that's why I wanted closure on that matter because, uh, at that time, it appeared to me that there was no communication within the ODC board. And all of you all, um, uh, serve at the pleasure of this entire council, based on the fact that an ODC member versus the chairman bring forward that information was kinda, kinda confusing to me as to why he presented that and not you and/or the co-chair.
There was, there was one time when the, uh, party that was trying to make this project go, go through, was trying to communicate with me by phone. I decided, I talked to, uh, Council Dan Jones about it, decided not to communicate. I didn't have any communication with that other party. Tim, on the other hand, being just a board member, had talked to them on multiple occasions. They, back and forth conversation that I did not, I was not, uh, in, in on any of those calls about. He was acting basically alone on those, on those conversations with them. And he would bring things back to us in closed session about what, what they were wanting to do and wanted to be on a phone call with us, whatever it became, because we could not have them meeting with us until we had this, and, um, and the due diligence was all complete. And it wasn't quite, wasn't there yet. And on the, on the situation about that, not one of us knew until that phone call, that group phone call, that the process of what was not, what was, I mean, the deception that was happening, I hate to use the word deception, but the other party was not telling the bank receiver that they were, they were supposed to be the sole purchaser of that pros, that property, and they were not.
Is that standard procedure within the ODC board to allow just any member to communicate, uh, on their own?
No. This, this process was going on, this, this project was going on for near eighteen months. And, and, uh, that he was not, he, he'd only been on the board for a few months. And, uh, I can't speak to him, I don't know if he's here today, but I can't speak on his behalf about what he was doing with that company. No, it's not.
I appreciate that.
Dr. Kirk, I hate to ask this, but your middle initial's not T, is it?
No.
Close. Because actually, I, I personally like the idea. Is there a, a plan, a thought to try to move forward on something like that?
Tom Mansky, our Economic Development, uh, coordinator, has talked with other companies that may have the process of bringing a, a rail port in, another type, uh, group of people. There, he had a meeting with one of the, um, one of the projects he was on, one of the, um, conferences he went to, and they, he, there were two or three large entities that were looking into possibly doing something like that. We were, we're very open to moving into something like that again. Just the process of the way this one happened, that we decided not to move forward on this one.
Any other questions, Mr.?
We do have some speaker cards.
Okay, who's first?
Okay, Larry Robinson.
Name of the speaker, be seated. Thank you, John Kirk.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
To answer Gilbert's question he hadn't asked me, but I have a lot of information on, is that, uh, during the process, the statements that were made were that it, that Mr. Harry said the property was clean. I ascertained that it was not clean. It had standing oil, chemicals, dead birds. And the full report said, drill, baby, drill. You might, to find out, you're gonna have to drill, drill, drill. We drilled two wells around a, uh, a diesel tank. But other than that, any other information, you'll have to garnish your own. The second point was that, that, that was said, and by the same party, that we had the financials and we were somewhat holding back for some reason. We did not have the same financials, personal financials of the principal at that time. And there was also an instance, situation that ODC was holding back for some reason, that our leader was holding back, but that's not true. We did not have information to work with. And what we did have from day one defined that this was probably not a worthy deal. And we insisted over and over and over on these financials and some of those reports. And I believe one of them came in the, the very day after, at, later in the day after the statements were made right here. And, uh, any other questions, I'd be glad to answer. I investigated the property. There was a rollback with several hundred gallons of oil in it, dead birds floating, overflowing from the rain. There was acids, salts, derivatives. There were, uh, that site had had Chris Oak. They called it the Rail Tie Ranch and had thousands of rail ties, uh, leaking, Chris, Chris Oak over the years since the fifties. So, an extensive, uh, search of the property was needed. And it wouldn't have been my recommendation buying it with what we have.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Next.
Chris Crow.
It's getting warm in here. Honorable Mayor, distinguished council, thanks for the time to speak to you today. Since I was the, uh, ODC president at the time that Project Logical Location was brought up, I was hoping I may can answer some of these questions. But to your first question, Mr. Vasquez, no, it's definitely not a, uh, normal occurrence for the ODC to, to, to not have the chairman come up and speak to you guys like that. But if you'll remember, that was right in the middle of the time when you'd removed the president and the vice president. And to be real honest, the board was in a flux. And so, uh, I think at the time, they picked the person that probably had a little bit of information, was willing to speak, which was Mr. Harry. Project Logical, Logical Location is a great project. I mean, to have, uh, that type of facility in Odessa would be a huge benefit. It'd be a huge benefit to future economic development, to existing companies. And I think the city needs to continue to pursue that. What we ran into was the site selector that was running the middle, to be the middle man between the person who's gonna operate the facility and the ODC just wasn't being honest with anybody. Namely, the, the, the bank that was handling the receivership. And so, what you actually had was a check, a system of checks and balances that worked. You had a compliance committee that was doing their job and was asking the right questions and crossing their Ts and dotting their Is. And the site selector just put off information, put off information as long as they could until it finally blew up in their face. And when it did, the ODC board did exactly what they should have done, which was back away from the situation and they looked for another project in the future. So, hopefully that answers some of your questions. If you have any others, I'd be happy to, to answer those if I can.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Crow.
You bet. Thank you, guys.
Any other speakers?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, appreciate everyone's comment and thoughts on that matter. Let's go to, uh, Agenda Item Number Four, the update on the alleged open, Texas Open Meeting Act violation pertaining to the ODC. Tim Harry, I believe.
Mayor, Mr. Harry is not gonna be able to make it today. I believe he has a, uh, business meeting or something, he was telling me.
Is there someone else that can cover?
Uh, Mr. Bhutan's here.
David, do you mind speaking to us? Just giving us an update?
And, and I've handed in front of you, uh, an email from Jeff Moore. Uh, I believe y'all have it.
Right, correct. Thank you, sir.
I'm, I think most everybody knows, um, I wouldn't mind speaking anytime.
Keep it short.
Everything I do is short. The only thing that I would really say is, uh, the allegation that was made, I think, was unfounded. I called, uh, City Attorney Jones, asked him if we could meet, have a conference call with Jeff Moore. And he just told me, he says, just contact him direct, just ask him the questions. He'll, and have him respond in writing, which he did, and which determined that there was no violation. I think the disappointing part for me was that the allegation was not made to me personally, at the outset, you know, I, and I did talk to Tim later and asked him to have the courage in the future, if he has a problem with me, to talk to me directly. But then, he took it to the council, took it to the AG. Understand, I think he took it to the District Attorney's office. I don't know what outcome there was of that. But again, we've got an opinion, legal opinion, says there was no, no violation. Uh, I just thought it was very poorly handed, didn't have the facts, and just kinda went off half-cocked on it. That's my position.
And there was, I believe, a, uh, opinion from the attorney that there was no violation. So, far as I'm concerned, the matter's closed. Uh, is there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bhutan.
Thank you.
Larry Robinson. Chris Crow.
Come on up, dear Crow.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Now, I just want to say, you know, with my time on the ODC, I've seen nothing but utmost total professionalism out of David Bhutan. Extremely knowledgeable for economic development. This whole issue, I, I think he, he set it off just right. We hit somebody that went off half-cocked. This should have never been brought forward. This was absolutely nothing. When I went through, read the emails and saw the back and forth, and I think the, our attorney, Jeff Moore, did a great job of summarizing what it is. There is no issue here. Uh, it was my pleasure to serve with Mr. Bhutan. You have an ODC that I think is, is fantastic. We've sometimes had issues we didn't always agree on, but that's healthy. I mean, you having different members on the board that agree all the time, you might as well just have one member. Um, so you've got a, you had a really good board, and Mr. Bhutan is, is, in my opinion, just, uh, an excellent member of ODC and, uh, no reason to do anything here. But I, I like what you said, Ramar. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Crow. We appreciate it. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay.
Just one, one comment.
Yes, sir.
Count, if I may, uh, I think it'd be appropriate for, uh, Mr. Harry to, to publicly apologize to Mr. Bhutan for doing that. I, I thought it was totally out of line. Uh, we, we don't need that kind of stuff going on, because that, that, that just gives everybody a bad feeling about, and a, and a bad attitude about what's happening in the city of Odessa. We, we don't need those kind of things. And if somebody's got an issue like that, they need to go to the proper place and, 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 like to Mr. Jones, and find out what it, really they're talking about, rather than going off, as was said, half-cocked and, and just being rogue. And we've had enough of that the last four years. It's time to get together and go forward. I'm tired of looking back. It's time to go forward and get some things done. We've got some wonderful opportunities in front of us. ODC's a big part of that. And, uh, I want ODC to function properly and as a team. And we, we don't need a rogue member out there. And so, I'm, would ask this council to stay with me and ask for an apology to Mr. Bhutan.
I second that, uh, that motion, Mr. Thompson. When I found out about, and by the way, not that it matters, but Mr. Bhutan was my council, uh, I mean, my ODC appointee, but he serves all of us, not just me. When I found out that a, this allegation of an open records, uh, violation had come from a fellow board member, uh, and publicly in front, right there at that podium, this gentleman, Mr. Harry, came up and made us all feel like, uh, we had something here that one of the ODC board members had broken the open records, uh, situation. To me, that was disparagement of that gentleman's name and his position on the ODC board. And I'm in agreement with what you said earlier, Mr. Bhutan. Just like he disparaged you some, few weeks ago, right here in front of that podium, I think he owes you a public apology, um, regarding that matter. But whether it happens or not, that's gonna be up to you and him, or him, rather. Okay?
Can't make a motion.
No. No, we're just discussing.
No, actually.
No action, just discussing.
I will say this for everyone here and the community at large. Everyone that donates their time to, to serve, work for the city, serve the city. It's difficult. It's hard work. People that serve on these committees, uh, trust me, I've in the last six to eight weeks grown a whole new appreciation for how much time that these gentlemen and women have spent on these subjects, research, working, meetings. Uh, there's a meeting on my calendar literally every day, every hour. So, I appreciate how much you work. And I do think this new council wants to see a, a kinder, gentler approach to things. It's okay to disagree, ladies and gentlemen, but don't be disagreeable. If you have an issue, take it to the appropriate, take it right to the person or City Attorney, or any, and verify that there's something worth approaching before launching into it. Uh, we don't, we need to work together. I want us to be unified. I want us to be together as one group of people for the premium basin called Odessa. Somebody termed Team Odessa, and I like it. There's no I in Team Odessa, right? It's all of us together, each one of us out there. So, I appreciate, number one, all the work, all the committees do, all the work the employees do. And I just think from now on, we wanna see everyone work together for the better of Odessa. I want that to be your goal. I want that to be your mantra. What is best for the city, that's what we want to, to see, each of you. And I'd appreciate from now, if you take, take that as, as, as a a recommendation, that that's what your city council wants to see. Everyone working hard, working for the betterment of this city. That's enough said. Let's go to number five, discuss the, uh, award of the request for proposal for the water distribution system improvements. Alex?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to inform you that within the Utilities Department, we have released and closed an RFQ for water distribution system improvements. This RFQ contains an improvement for County Road West from Thirteenth Street to Kermit Highway. This project will be for replacement and upsizing of the current eight-inch cast iron line to twelve-inch PVC, along with replacing all valves within the infrastructure. The current water line has a total of twenty-nine breaks with multiple broken valves. This line has been an issue for our department and will continue to be until replaced. After evaluating all RFQ proposals, Purchasing has recommended Park Hill for the engineering and design for this project. We will be requesting consideration and approval of the award to Park Hill in the next council meeting. The timeline for this project is crucial due to TechDOT repaving this road by April 2026. Any questions? Uh, it's not a bid of water or anything. This was our department coming to let you guys know that we're working on water lines. Uh, this is a big project for us, twenty-nine breaks against a, a line that we've had multiple issues with, plus pressure in that area is low. And this will be able to help with fire flow, pressure along to residents, um, hospital, HEB, Walmart, all that.
Do I understand that TechDOT is gonna be repaving that highway also?
Yes, sir. So, I've spoken with TechDOT, with, um, our Public Works Department, and they, we understand the timeline of getting it in and done by April 2026.
Because they're gonna start.
Yes, sir. They're gonna start repaving that. Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Okay. And let me just ask this question. We don't need to do Thirteenth to Second or any further, or any further north?
So, that, yes.
I'm just asking for clarification.
So, that, that line, when you get to Thirteenth Street, actually juts off and breaks off into, uh, our infrastructure and then loops. So, um, we could go north, um, but there is, are not as many breaks along the line on the north side.
You know how old that line is? What, north of Kermit Highway?
Uh, I don't know exactly, because when you hit Kermit Highway, it does jut over to the west and then extends the line. So, it could have been, um, further or later date added, you know, when it was added to our infrastructure. But I do not know the current year of that line, but.
I think we all wanna be proactive.
For sure.
And, and just, so I'm just trying to
Absolutely.
In my mind, figure out.
I would assume that line's probably from the fifties. If I could go and look, we haven't, due to our network, I haven't been able to pull that up, so. But it, it would be from the fifties or the sixties, so you're looking at least.
Is there any way to test that line?
So, we could do an assessment of the line. It would be something out of the scope for our Utilities Department right now. Uh, we could, we are looking into hiring out and doing assessments of water lines, of our transmission mains. That is something that I have spoken with several engineering firms about. There are different techniques and different systems on how to test maybe the thickness of the wall or, you know, sending a probe down the inside that has fillers that could test that. But that, that comes with money. With this project, the amount of line breaks that we currently have, I would say there's no reason to really do an assessment. By the time you do an assessment of the line, you're gonna spend another two-hundred-and-fifty-five, you know, half a million. So, that's just added to it, knowing to a line that you're gonna have to replace anyways.
We appreciate it. Any quick questions, council?
So, does Park Hill can perform in the timeframes that we need?
Yes, sir.
You don't have that?
That was one of the
You don't have that long to go.
That was one of our, um, items in our RFQ, RFQ, was to make sure that they proposed to us the timeline that they could fit it in by that.
Alex, are they working out of Midland?
Sir?
The Park Hill, are they working?
They do have people out of Midland, and then their main office is out of San Angelo.
And thank you also for the LCA, at least for trying local.
Yes, sir.
Just as well.
Yes, sir. There were five people that put in for this RFQ, locally and outside.
Any question? Go ahead, Greg.
This is the, i- is this out of that twenty-five million that is?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very good. Any speakers?
No, sir.
We thank you for your time, Alex. Thank you. All right, we'll move into Agenda Item Number Six. We're gonna discuss the water billing issue. Councilor Stoker.
Well, let's, let's be me. And I'm, and I'm sure that's why everyone's here today. Now, I, I just wanted to give people the opportunity, in the past, uh, however many months it's been since we started this campaign and, uh, running for office, that's been kinda the number one thing people have been coming to me with are what's going on with the water bills? What's going on with the wa? We, we got these new meters and now my bill is tripled. We got, uh, overnight, I used twenty-five thousand gallons of water and there's, you know, we don't have a pool. We've had some interesting couple of weeks with our, our network being down, so I know there's gonna be some issues getting the, the checks filed. I was up here last week. It was a little bit of mayhem. I wanted to, to kinda have questions on that, you know? Mr. Morton and I had a, a chance to visit about some things, and I learned, uh, about a suitcase, I believe you called it?
Yes.
So, I, I, uh, I think that's something that, you know, might put some people's minds at ease if we knew that was a service we offered.
Sure.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, thank you, Councilman. Um, so, the question is, how accurate are the meters? That's a question, right? So, what we need to know is that as meters age in the ground, they become less accurate over time, but they become less accurate in favor of the customer. Meaning, the water flowing through the meter doesn't completely register. So, that bill over time goes down. So, cities need to replace those meter over time to recover the revenue necessary to run the operation. So, we are now putting in new meters. When you put in a new meter, replace an old meter, if it was inaccurate in favor of the customer, that new meter is going to be very accurate. It's gonna measure every drop going through. So, naturally, that bill will go up. But if there's ever a question from our citizens, uh, we can test those meters, and we can test them in the field. So, if you have a doubt, we have a device that, that I call the suitcase. Rogelio, is that what you call it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, what the suitcase is, is just a field measuring device, where you can go out and bypass the meter with the suitcase. I mean, the water's coming through the meter, but you also wanna measure separately the water that's going through the meter. So, you hook up a water hose to the suitcase, and you run fifty gallons, whatever you run, and you compare the, the measure of that suitcase meter versus the meter in the ground. And if they're registering the same thing, it is accurate. So, we're very willing to do that. So, the meters, the new meters going in the ground, they're, they are accurate. Now, some of the old meters, I will tell you, were not necessarily reading at all. And they were just sending out a minimum bill. Okay, so, in theory, a, one of our citizens or multiple of our citizens could have been for months or years getting a minimum bill. So, they benefited over time from that old meter. Now, you put a new meter in there, they're getting an accurate reading and we're recovering that. That is a shock if you've been getting a minimum bill. That is a shock. And so, if, if you have a question, please call us and ask. That's what we're here for. Really. We're here to, to help you understand what's going on.
May I ask?
Yes, sir.
When you're saying an old meter?
Yes, sir.
Are you talking about the old new meter that they replaced already? Or are you talking about the old fifty-year-old meter?
No, we don't have any, we should not have.
Is the city completely out of the old?
Yeah, we're, all the meters that we're replacing now are, um, smart meters that we replaced ten years ago.
Ten years ago? Okay.
Twelve years ago. So, these are, these are meters that are sending a signal to our system, and that's reporting to billing collection, to billing here. So, um, whatever that meter reads, that's what's gonna get reported. Now, occasionally, somebody's gonna use more water than they think they're using. Maybe there's a leak. Maybe they did use twenty-five thousand gallons and there's a leak. Well, we have, we work with those citizens with the leak adjustment. So, you come in, you show us that you've had a leak, we'll work with you. You show us that you fixed that leak, we'll reduce that bill. So, we do that all the time.
Do we offer any payment plans or anything like that?
That's a great question, Councilman Stoker. Yes, we do. Uh, they just need to come in and talk about it with us. Uh, this is for Rogelio or Gopie. Quick question for you. Do we still have the, the funds set aside for that we get from insurance?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, when I was here in the past, um, we got revenue from an insurance program. And, um, it made sense to me to set that money aside in a fund, separate fund, that would help with folks that were, in a general, having issues or needed help. So, that's set aside as well. So, I, I, I know with the system being down, it's been very frustrating over the last two and a half weeks, and I can only apologize to you for that. But if you have a question, um, please come see us.
So, my, my other curiosity, so when it's coming back up, I know right now we're waiving the fee. How long is that fee gonna be waived?
Until we're certain that, um, the system is up and running. So, Gopie was just telling me this morning, uh, when we send bills out, we send them in different cycles. Different parts of the city get a different bill. So, we were in, um, fifty-three, I think it was, correct. Okay, so, a bill may have gone out in cycle fifty-three, okay? That got paid. So, because we were down, some people may be getting two bills.
Yeah.
A 54 cycle and a 55 cycle. So, or not cycles, but October and November, okay? So we're definitely going to work with those people. Some, some people can pay two bills, okay? Some people can't. So we'll continue to work with them until we get this straight. So again, no late fees for a while, and certainly no cutoffs for, for non-payment.
Yeah. That, that was my concern, is that people are going to get two bills, they're going to get that shock, and it may take a minute. Yeah, that kind of goes to the other question I had, you know, some of this, you get people in a crunch, they're going to have to put it on their credit card, and we're charging them 5% to do that. I've been curious about that for sure. Mr. Jones, I asked about that, because, you know, our charter, there's language in there that says we can't charge fees more than 2%. So why are we charging 5%?
Sitting here, I don't have an answer for you, other than that's what we're being charged and we're passing it through. You ask me to look at that, I'll look at it.
So I, I would like an answer to that, because if our, if our, if our rulebook says we can't charge more than 2% on fees, why are we charging 5%? But my, my last question was that senior water rate, making sure that our seniors, are they automatically getting the frees? I don't understand why they all had to come line up here to, to get that. That should be, I mean, we should know how old people are. I had to bring my whole life up here to get water, so.
That's a good question I'd like to ask. Rogelio, just come up for a second and head to the podium. So what I understand, your question to be was, when the rate increases for this fiscal year went into effect, you did not pass that on to people over 65.
Correct. So there's a senior water rate.
Right.
Correct. And when people turn, is it 65 that they qualify for that?
Correct.
And so if.
If they're over 65, we'll qualify.
And disabled.
And disabled.
And disabled. So if somebody turns 65 this year, do they automatically get that discount?
If we have their information, their driver's license, and we do have that, yes. But if we don't, we ask them to bring that, their documents in. And a lot of times, they're trying to get it for someone else. So we got to make sure that they're the actual account holder. That's the reason we have them come in, because sometimes we change door, we don't have everyone's information. That's what caused it.
I just know I had to bring a folder this thick of stuff to get water on my house.
And then for us to sit here and say, okay, you set up service 10 years ago, you turned 65, 10 years, there's no way of me knowing. I'd have to go hunt every account to tell me that you're that age. There's no way for me of knowing. So when somebody turns 65, they give us a call, we can see that information and give you that rate.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure that the, the frees that y'all put on for the water increase, you know, I, I, that didn't make sense to me. Why people, when I showed up here, there were 100 seniors in the lobby trying to get their discount attached, when the city should know all their information. I mean, if I've got to bring the title and deed and whatever to my house, I would imagine you know my birthday. So just curious about that.
And we probably do know your birthday, but we don't know.
I promise you.
For it to pop up for us.
Fortunately, councilman, not everybody's honest. I've had several of those calls too, where the people calling aren't the account holder.
Yeah, but it should be tied to the. But it should be tied to the account holder.
It is. But the person calling, from what Rogelio and I've talked about, is that they're calling, acting like they're the account, the account holder, but they're not. Makes sense?
No.
Well, I call in and say, I'm Craig Stoker. I'm 65, I want my discount.
Right.
I come and, they come and check, that's why they ask for your information, is because not everybody that calls in, somebody may live, be living in the house that's over 65, they're not the account holder.
Their name ain't on the bill.
That's correct.
But it's got to be the person whose name's on the bill. That's what I don't understand. Why would there be a disconnect in that?
Because people, people live at home, I mean, there are 30-year-olds living at home with mom and dad that are 80 years old. I mean, if you keep up with that kind of thing, kids are staying at home more, and the council, dad's name or mom's name, maybe switches it over to his name, who knows? But if they're there, and somebody's in the house living there that's over 65, they may know that rule and try to get that discount when their name isn't on the bill and not.
Yeah, but as long as that person's living in the house, they don't, you, you mean, if, if, if I was living with my mother, she wouldn't be entitled to the?
Sure she would.
Discount?
But you wouldn't be.
So I couldn't use her water at a discount?
No.
No, you couldn't get.
All right.
You couldn't get the bill, bill to use at her discount.
All right. Well, again.
And that's the scam people play.
That's.
And the scenario you're talking about is you have a, a son or a daughter that's living. The mother says, I'm leaving here. Now she wants it changed to her name because she's 65, right? She puts it in her name, but she doesn't live there. Her kids do. So, I mean, that's why we make it in their name, and they have to be there.
So that's what you could do, is have your mom put it on your water bill in her name. Just teasing.
Can, can somebody have two accounts in their name, I guess?
Yeah, we need, we just need to watch that. So I'm 62, so if I had an account, and I'm there for the next three years, and I turn 65, I have to come in and make that change? You can call. I can call. But if we don't have your, if we don't have your credentials, which is the driver's license, then we ask for you to come in. Would you have had that already? I mean, I've been in the house for 10 years, say? We should, yes. So you'd be able to verify that over the phone? Yes.
You know, on intake with a new customer, it seems to me, at least we need it now, is a data fill for date of birth, so it could be queried just as well.
We have it.
You, you do have it.
Yes. Yeah, that's a way of looking up an account also, through birthday, driver's license. But it doesn't pop up. If Richard turns 65 tomorrow, I have no, it won't tell me.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions?
I just have one comment.
Yes, sir.
I've lived at my residence for 48 years, and I'm way past that 65. And that rate freeze that Councilman Stoker asked about, applying to senior citizens and disabled, how does the city know that this rate, for me, at my address, is to take effect, this rate freeze? I didn't quite understand how, how, how that's done here at City Hall.
So if, if, if he's already receiving the over 65 rate, and the council voted to freeze, not pass on this rate at all, he automatically gets that, or what's that mechanism? Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking.
Yeah, it's automatic.
It's automatic. If you've already had that 65, over 65 exemption on, so.
Because it's been verified.
Right.
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't know. That was 11 years ago.
You've lost your great soul since then.
Well, that's a good question. So how would, how would I look at my bill and know that I'm getting the over 65 rate? You won't see it. You'd have to call us, and we'll.
Yeah, you'd have to know the rate.
And it'll tell us.
Well, that might be a good idea to put something on that to say, you are 65, you get the senior rate. It, it doesn't take that much to put that in a computer, say, senior rate included.
Councilman Mitchell, it, it's a little difficult. We've tried with Munis, and it's a, it, it's a line item that they do not offer, we cannot.
The software doesn't allow you to do it.
Correct. We've tried, and we've put in as a programmer, and it's, they're not able to do it.
Well, maybe we better upgrade this.
Were there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
Let's draw the first one.
Jeff Russell.
My favorite, Mr. Russell.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, wasn't really planning on speaking on this, but I did want to add two different things. You know, a number of months ago, when all this started kind of cropping up through a public information request, we had requested a lot of information out of the utility and, and billing department to try to ascertain if there was any validity to these people going on Facebook and Nextdoor and all this, saying, you know, my, my water bill tripled and all that. One of the things that I would encourage this council to look at is there are reporting, and kind of what we, kind of the approach that we tried to take, and, and probably didn't get all the information that we needed was, but was to look at the number of gallons coming out of the water treatment plant and comparing that to the number of gallons that were billed, to see if we had a disconnect there. Because within the tracking, we found, and some of the stuff that has to be reported at the state, there's also tracking that goes in there for line breaks, and how many estimated gallons are, are lost there, how many gallons are used by fire, the, the fire department, and things like that. So that might be a good sanity check to see if we're, if we're pumping a million gallons out of the utility, out of the water treatment plant, and we're billing for 1.2 million, then we know we've got, we got an issue. So that, that would be something perhaps to look at. The other thing I would really encourage you guys to look at is, and, and I'm sorry, again, didn't plan on speaking, but I don't, I'll pull the numbers out of memory. But in the contract where we, where the city contracted with the, with the new meter company, when you look at the cost of all that over, over time, I, I think that contract was somewhere about $95 million, when you include interest and things like that. So we're spending a lot of, am I, am I somewhere in the, you remember, Dan? Yeah. About $95 million to replace those meters. And I, I, I sat there one day and tried to do the math of how many gallons we'd have to, we'd have to recover and bill for, to recoup $95 million, and I couldn't quite get there. But I'd really encourage you guys to take a look at that contract as well, if you, if you can. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Russell. Could you say any way to verify gallons used out of the plant versus?
Yeah, we know.
Let me, interesting to study this.
Wouldn't that be, yeah, wouldn't that be?
We have to produce a.
Double entry accounting.
For the state as well. We know how much we're, we're taking in from C.R.D.D. We know how much we're pumping out, and we know how much we're billing for, so we can calculate the loss.
Let's keep that on the workshop for next month, just to see, and it's kind of fun to do little comparisons, to see where we are, make sure we're righteous, is all I want to make sure. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
And that contract, Mr. Russell references, that's the PSI that's replacing everybody?
That's the PSI.
That's it.
I looked at that today.
Was it just meters?
I'm sorry?
Was it just meters for 95 million?
No, no. The meter side is.
Come on up, Alex. Come on up.
The meter side, I looked at that today, and the capital, the, the principal on the meters was like.
44 million. 44.7 million, and then total is 69,900,000.
And that is through a lease?
That is through a water meter lease, and that is over the next 20 years.
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure the lease was the best way to go. Versus issuing debt, but.
This was done before both me and Mr. Morton.
And I'm not criticizing.
Yeah, no, they're not criticizing.
Surely, surely.
I'm not criticizing. I'm just saying, this was based on, rather than strictly just, we need the meters, let's go out and buy them and install them. This was a, let's call it a performance contract. So there are companies that, I mean, if you need to replace lights, and I don't necessarily like those type of contracts, because they say, well, if you replace with newer, more efficient lights, you will save money over time, right? I mean, that's, I think that's true. But proving that is, is, is hard to do. You still need to replace the lights, so just issue the debt to replace the lights, and don't necessarily count on the savings. So this PSI contract is a performance contract. And so they're going to, they told us when we, when we did this deal, that you replace those old meters, you recover X amount of dollars in addition. So that's a net savings. So that's, that in theory helps you pay for that higher interest rate in this contract.
There's three different things. So this is the water meters, the Yukon Pump Station, that would be adding a pump, adding 2 million gallon clear well, and that would be to supply for the new water tower that we've placed on hold. And then lighting, you know, small things about, around that area, lighting, small, things like that.
And all that was the 44 million?
That, that is the 44 million, yes.
So again, this deal was done.
But we're at a 20-year contract, what I just heard, or lease.
It's 20 years' worth of debt, whether you pay it in a lease or not. And some cities go to this scenario because maybe they're, they have too much debt, and this debt does not necessarily show up on the books as debt, because it's a lease payment. Is that correct?
It does strike differently, but it still is considered an obligation to a revenue.
So it's a different way to do things, and I think you, you probably pay more interest on this type of deal than you do on just issuing certificates of obligation or revenue bonds or something like that. But you may not, the city may not have been, and I wasn't here, so I can't tell you.
It's not a criticism or anything. We would like, maybe the next meeting, just more, so we understand what we're in.
Yeah, we can go through it.
When someone asks us, because I, I guess I didn't understand that.
Yes, sir.
So this should, talk, talk about it a little, few minutes.
Well, if I can, if I can, I was here, and I was part of that deal, and the council, the previous council, previous four years, had a tremendous adversity towards debt. And so they, they didn't see the lease as debt, and that's the savings that we recover on lost water, plus the human capital that goes into reading meters, which may or may not be accurate, that those numbers made sense over 20 years to pay for those meters. That's how it was sold.
And there is a revenue on top of that. There is.
Yes.
I, I believe right now we've done 55% of the meters, and we're at about 1.8 million dollars extra in, in revenue per the year.
So there's, there's your answer.
So that's the bills that, that people are crying about and are upset about. That's additional revenue from the city that's, we're recovering from the citizens, but it's actual water that's being used.
Because we just want to make sure we understand.
For sure.
Better what we're in. And make sure, of course, I think it worked for the city. It's the best deal for the city. Maybe we can't get out of it, but I would like to understand it a little better.
Yeah, Alex and I were talking earlier, and Kaylee has set up a meeting with George Williford, who's our financial advisor. And one of the questions I had on this particular contract is, and I asked Alex to research, is there an early out? Maybe we could refinance and pay less interest over time. So that's what, that's things that we're talking about.
So the only out that I have been able to identify in the contract so far is there is a prepayment option at year 10, where we can pay off the rest of it at year 10.
What year are we in? I should ask that.
Um, year. We're in year one. We, we enacted it in July of 2023, so.
So year and a half.
Year and a half.
Yes. And I think the prepayment option is in 2032, so.
We appreciate it. Thank you all very, both y'all very much for information. Okay, you have your answers. Wasn't very satisfying, but we have them. Thank you, Craig, for bringing that to our attention. Let's move on. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, let's move on to item number seven. We're going to discuss amending section 8-1-6, restricted use of public restroom, changing rooms, locker rooms, based on sex in the city code of ordinances. I bring this to our attention because, first of all, I think we all can agree, everyone in this room can agree, that we do not want men in women's bathroom or locker room. Horrible idea. We all can agree to that. So we're not, we're not going to have that. What I don't want to have, though, is a statute that creates what's called a private cause of action against each other. The statute that was approved by the last, the ordinance that was approved by the last council is probably unconstitutional, discriminatory, it creates a private cause of action. That means, and I'll give you an example. I went to Chick-fil-A, we used the restroom. I saw the clean stuff in the hallway, but they weren't cleaning, so I went in there and used the restroom. Right, tell me, 30 seconds, and I'm out. A girl walked in to clean the restroom, and she didn't see me. She's had the broom and this and that. Well, I said, ma'am, excuse me. She, oh, I'm so sorry, she leaves. In theory, I could sue her, because she's in Corstens School for Employment for Chick-fil-A, I could sue Chick-fil-A. Now, I think that's terrible, brothers suing each other. It's just crazy. We can sue each other for accidentally going to the wrong spot. So private causes of action create a lot of burden on the city, a lot of burden on the courts. I think it's a horrible idea. That's one of my major concerns. There's also, ACLU sent a long letter, it's like 11 pages, explaining to us how it's unconstitutional, how it's discriminatory. You can believe it or not believe it, they certainly believe it, and it's called a notice to sue letter, and they're going to sue the city of Odessa. I have a problem with that, because we're trying to move the city forward, and I don't want to get bogged down in five or 10 years with litigation that costs the city a million dollars for some court later to tell me that our, our ordinance is unconstitutional. So what I want to consider and talk about today is a, I used to, a theory of KISS, keep it simple. And I'm stupid, so I'll use that. Keep it simple, stupid. I want an ordinance that prevents men from going to the women's restroom or locker room. But I want people to go to the restroom and use it and not be able to sue each other. So I've asked legal, because they actually had one prepared previously in.
April '89.
April, April and May is one, this one, that we're going to talk about today. And I hope someone from legal's here to tell us about both contracts, or both ordinances, while one's good, and the other may be just as good, but less problematic.
I thought it'd been on the books since '89.
Well, the, the initial one was '89, but the one that we had initially proposed was in April or May of this year. in April or May of this year.
Right, but it was an amendment to the 89.
It was an amendment to the 89, the one, 816, 1989.
We already had an amendment in place. So what, so what they did was, what he did was they attacked on an amendment.
Right.
And so that's, that's what I was opposed to, for exactly what you're saying, is that private cause of action.
Yep.
We create lawsuits and a ACLU lawsuit, we don't need more lawsuits.
So let's talk about an ordinance that actually does what we want it to do, which keep men out of women's bathrooms and locker room, but maybe not so problematic. Oh, lucky there, this is like magic. So, so, so Mayor, first off, we do need an ordinance like this, we do need one so that we can prosecute the people that are up to no good, the malicious folks that are wanting to go into men's bathrooms, women's bathrooms, to be up to no good. And so that's one of the reasons that we need this. Now, I want to kind of talk a little bit about what we have currently. And we talk about this private right of action, and I don't think people really understand that any person can sue another for going into a restroom of an opposite sex. So if I saw Richard going in, like I say, the Chick-fil-A, he going into the women's restroom, well, I could sue him. And, but, of course, my concern is proving it, okay? How am I going to prove it? Am I going to get a video of him sitting on the toilet? Am I going to get a video of him going in there? Am I going to have to have multiple witnesses? And you know what? I can sue him for statutory damages of $10,000. But hang on, there's a little caveat there. So let's say that Richard is, is found to be guilty of my lawsuit. Well, next thing you know, Norma sues him a couple years later. Well, he can go back and prove, well, I was actually sued by Dan here a couple years ago. So he's kind of off the hook with hers, okay? That's how crazy this is. And guess what the statute of limitations is? Six years. So this could happen today, and I wait six years from yesterday, and I could sue you. That's crazy. So, and there's really no defense to this. And then, and it, and there's a lot of problems with it, as far as, you know, the private cause of action. And I think that's really the main, you know, concern.
Right.
And, and the new version is, you know, it's going to apply only to city-controlled buildings, which is what we can do, and allows the city to provide unisex restroom facilities if needed. You know, and that solves a lot of problems. You go to some of these places with unisex, men, women, it doesn't matter, transgender, whoever, whatever, they can go in there, okay? But now, there's another one, as far as like the restrooms for children and or disabled needing assistance. What's going to happen under this particular ordinance that we have now, if a mama goes into the restroom, or cares her little boy into the restroom, he may be 13, 14 years old, and he may have a disability that he needs help. So there's all kinds of problems that we have, okay? And, and so, again, we want this to be, to prosecute the malicious offenders. We don't want to target law-abiding citizens. And we want to appeal to concerned citizens and to marginalized folks in the community. And of course, I think Chief Gerke would, wherever he's at back there, Chief Gerke would, would, would agree that, that, you know, we want them to pursue more serious criminal offenses. Diane, can you click, click forward, please, ma'am? And so this is the proposed restroom ordinance that we have in your packets today. And it has no private cause of action. But again, Mayor, you're absolutely right. We want there to be, you know, that boys in the boys restroom, girls in the girls restroom. It's what we're wanting. And so, but this has, this has the biological sex, it describes biological person at birth, based on that person's root for existence or other physical characteristics. And it deals with the public citizen, public facility as well. It's on there. And we have all of this, that it basically is what we presented in April, May, that I consider common sense. It just makes sense for the city. But yet, at the same time, though, it also gives us the opportunity to add single occupant and family facilities. So you can do a unisex restroom, or you can have where, you know, a disabled person could get help from their parents, or someone else, or caregiver, whoever that may be. So that's something that, that we're proposing to do. And, and it's just simply a Class C misdemeanor, and not to exceed 500, not $10,000. Because my fear is that the current ordinance that we have, we're going to have people doing crazy things, you know? And then it goes back to how do you prove it? So there, that's, that's what we have. And could you click on forward? And it just describes, of course, the public building, the restroom, biological sex facility used, yeah. Go ahead and click on. And that this one is, this one is the older one, that we have the private cause of action, private right of action. And this is the prob, this is one problematic for me. That it's just not, it makes no sense. Go ahead and click on. Keep clicking.
That's the end.
Oh, and you have the, the, the letter from the ACLU?
It was going to be so tiny, I couldn't.
Okay. So, and we also have a letter from the ACLU that they sent to us, I believe, on the 11th or 12th of November. And I think I forwarded all that to you. So I mean, if y'all want to risk getting sued, then let's keep what we got. If you want to maybe do the right thing here, and let's maybe change it. Okay? Any comments from council?
Is there any?
Go ahead, Mr.
You know, record that this have happened?
I, I'm not aware of it. I mean, I'm not aware of it.
I hear no dissent, yes.
Has it, has it happened?
I'd say it has.
I haven't seen it. I don't have any proof myself to say one way or another.
Chief Gerke provided, and I don't know if he's here, I can't see.
He's here. Yeah, there he is. He's a good-looking bald guy at the back. Unlike the good-looking bald guy in the front.
Which one?
Which one?
All of it. There was a report that has the calls for men in the women's rooms, and it, you know, the majority of these looking through there, it's, you know, there's mental health or alcohol or drugs involved. It's not.
Some type.
Malicious.
Malicious, yeah.
Yeah, come on down. Come on down, Chief.
So I guess if, if somebody got raped or something, we just let it go. Is that what you were saying, on that deal that you got there?
You can ask the chief, these are his reports.
So, a couple of things I can say about that. Number one, with the network being down, it, it was very difficult to track down the end of what happened with these, these calls. So, maybe at some point, I can get that for you, but right now, with, with our network the way it is, it's very difficult. The vast majority of the things that you see are drug use, or alcohol use, and that sort of thing. There is, right now, even before the new ordinance took place, or came into existence, there was a, an ordinance that said, men couldn't go into women's restrooms. Generally speaking, that wasn't filed. What was filed were the other charges, the public intoxication, which is a Class C, just like being in the restroom would be a Class C, those sorts of things.
Gotcha. Counsel, any questions for the chief? Uh, Norma, any speakers?
Yes, we do.
Chief, we appreciate, would you hang around in case we need you again?
Sure.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, we have quite a few.
Okay, well, let's take them one by one.
As a reminder, you will have three minutes to speak on, on your, with your comments. Charles Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Charles Smith. I may have got misinformation about this, and the things I had kind of heard was that they were going to start allowing men to go in women's bathrooms.
Saw the same email, sir, don't interrupt you, but yeah, if anyone has the belief that we're going to allow that, no, just get it out of your head, it's not going to happen.
I appreciate everything that y'all have said on this, because there is some misinformation going on out there.
We're just trying to clean it up, so it's enforceable, and it's simple, and, and everyone, I mean, it's going to be clear still clear, though. Don't go in there unless you want to.
I, I got kicked off of Facebook because of my political stuff. I cannot open account. I used to go to Odessa Accountability and find information on different things going on. I don't have access to that. So I apologize for coming up here with the wrong thoughts about this.
We're glad you're here, sir, thank you.
Y'all have straightened out what, what I had heard. I thought, what is this Odessa coming to? So I'm very glad to hear y'all stand on this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sir, sir.
Evelyn Kerrigan?
Oh, I think Councilman Haney had a question, or?
Sir, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
So one of the deals with, with the, the public deal on this is that it's for outside of the city. It's for, it's for the restaurants that are in this city. It's for the protection for them. This, they had no way of, they could just tell somebody, hey, you're in the wrong bathroom, or hey, you, you cannot come in here. We, this is for men to men only. And there was nothing for them to post that they could get away, that, that would stand up and help them to keep this from happening over and over and over. And so that's what that statute is for. This is exactly what this statute, it's for outside of the city. It's for everybody in this city to have a way to make their restroom safe for their customers and for everybody else, not just, not just the city too. So that was one of the reasons why this was put in here, is to stipulate that, hey, this should cover the whole city, not just the city buildings. That's what this was passed for. And that's what the amendment was put in there for. Now, we want to take the amendment out to give the people not a chance to even do anything.
Well, I think that's a misstatement of that ordinance. That ordinance creates a private cause of action, okay?
Exactly.
Okay, you understand what that means? They could sue each other. You accidentally do something, you get sued for $10,000, okay? That's different than what you just said. That's a different statement.
That, that's, we put this in for that exact reason, so everybody could have a chance to, to protect their bathrooms. That's one of the deals that this was written up for.
I think Chief Gerke just stated, it never happened in that context that you stayed. It happened with drunk people, it happened with people that are mentally unstable. It's not been ever reported in the history of Odessa, at least we've been able to find. So I see what you're saying, but it just hadn't happened.
It has happened. There's people, I have, I have a young lady that it happened to, but because of the embarrassment of, of everything that I have received emails from over putting this bill up in this city, because I was the one that did this. I was the one that put it up. If you've seen some of the stuff that I've gotten email-wise, personally being slammed for making this about, it's not a, a, a trans agenda. This is not what this was for. This was for, I can protect my daughter, my granddaughter, my wife, from somebody in the bathroom. That's what I passed this for, not anything else. And you're taking away the legally, what we can do for ourselves. That's what this is taking, that's what you're pulling out of this.
Respect for disagree. Dan, can you comment on that? No, I mean, you, you still would be able to be prosecuted under this new ordinance. You would still be prosecuted. But what it does do is take out the private cause of action. So the private right of action gets removed, so it's not person against person out here. But it instead is the municipal court doing its job to prosecute these crimes that OPD has, people going in and out.
So, I think I understand where Councilman Haney is coming from. So the way the ordinance is rewritten, it only applies to city-owned buildings.
Correct.
So, so, and his concern, if I'm understanding you, is can, can the city extend that ban outside city buildings?
No.
And why can't we? Let's, let's answer that.
Well, we can't, because all we have is control of buildings owned by the city of Odessa. We do not have control of ECISD, we do not have control of Ector County. We can only control what is ours, our city buildings within the city limits of Odessa, Texas.
Okay, so.
Can the restaurants themselves do it, though? They want to put it, they can put a. They can. Say, men don't go in there, you're going to be prosecuted. They can do that.
The Marriott's got five bathrooms on the first floor, and they're all.
Excellent restaurant.
They're, and they're all.
Unisex.
Transgender.
They're unisex, they're all excellent.
Simple problem to solve. I mean, but it's an overreach for us to try to go to Longhorn Steakhouse or anybody else and tell them what they got to do.
We're not telling them what to do.
Oh, yeah, you are.
Yeah, you are.
What you just said, I disagree with you.
So, were men going into men's bathroom, and that, so, I mean.
At Longhorn Steakhouse, there's an overreach of the city of Odessa.
So, the same bill and ordinance been passed in two different states. In 2016, it was passed in North Carolina, and just passed recently in Utah. So I don't know why y'all are arguing this, and both of them withstood the Supreme Court fight.
They won't be the one that's going to Supreme Court, yeah. They're going to be, ACLU's going to sue them.
Yeah, well, both of them have survived.
I believe that's not where I read that article.
I believe you better read that again, because I see everything.
The purpose is to control what we can control, prevent it. All right, next speaker.
Thank you for letting me come and speak before you today. I do live in the county, but I do spend a lot of my money in the city. And I firmly believe, as a Christian, we cannot sleep through some of the things that are brought before us. And I'm still teaching my girls, my granddaughters, and stuff about life, and that your voice does matter, you know, and your opinions matter. I have had a lot of my questions answered already. I too was maybe misled a little. And it gave me confidence that y'all are not going to do anything knee-jerked that's going to affect my grandkids.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate you.
Shay Lane?
Hi, I want to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I am not only speaking on my own behalf, but on the behalf of others that are here and maybe not here today. I may also have been misinformed slightly. But Chris Haney, I do want to say thank you for bringing this to our city. Thank you so much. I stand with you on the ordinance that's already in place. I want to say thank you for that. You are scared of the ACLU bringing a lawsuit? Hell hath no fury like a woman scorned. I will tell you. I'm not saying that to be pompous. I so appreciate that you do not want to allow men into women's restrooms. I have grandchildren, four, five, and seven years old. I have a niece that's three years old. I have a niece that is seven years old. I have a niece that went to school at Permian High School, and she had to go into that bathroom with young men in that bathroom, putting on makeup. Now, I get that you are not in the county, I get that. This is a very real issue. Again, your fear is the ACLU bringing a lawsuit? I'm going to ask you to rethink what you're considering in changing this ordinance and the wording of this ordinance. There are very real people in here that are scared to go into our restrooms. You can say it's because a man's cleaning a woman's restroom, or a woman's cleaning a man's restroom. There's a very real issues that are not going to go away. You can say it's not a trans issue, it's a moral issue, it's an ethical issue. You said that you were elected on behalf of the people to meet their needs of all the citizens of the city of Odessa. I am a citizen of the city of Odessa, and I'm asking you, I am ploring of this council, do not change the wording in this. You're going to have lawsuits either way. You're going to have them. There's people in our church that have gone to the bathrooms in Target, and there have been men in those women's bathrooms. You're going to have, you will have lawsuits against you, no matter what you decide today. I'm only asking you to choose which hill you're going to die on today.
Just so we're clear, there's no action today. This is for discussion only.
I understand that. I, I do understand that, but there will be action.
Eventually, yes, ma'am.
Yes, there will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicki Swift? Vicki Swift? One more time, Vicki Swift?
Mr. Mayor.
They walked out.
Yes, sir.
Says on the, says on the deal, this is first action. So if you're saying nothing's going to happen today, why you have first action on here?
First approval.
On here.
This is workshop only. We can't take any action.
You were saying first approval on here.
No, that was when it was moved from the agenda, tonight's agenda, to here. So it must have been just took over.
They distracted the words from the.
Yeah, it's not on the, yeah, it's not on the regular agenda for action.
Just discussion here.
You've got a lot of people out of bed to come down here, because it says first approval on here. Well, so.
Next, Jeff Russell.
Mayor and council, again, if you were in the meeting when the ordinance was passed, Jonathan Covey, an attorney with Texas Values, presented the bulk of it. When I saw the change on, I contacted Mr. Covey and sent him the proposed changes. He was not able to be here, because he's been sick. But he did ask me to read a letter to you guys, where he reviewed the current proposed changes to the ordinance. And so, if I could have your permission to do that. Odessa City Council members have come to our attention that the council has posted to consider and discuss amending ordinance 816 relating to privacy for women and girls in restrooms, locker rooms, and other space separated spaces during a December 10, 2024 workshop meeting. The new language included in the Odessa City Council Agenda PAC differs significantly from the amended language passed on November 12. From what our legal and policy team can determine, the new language removes several important provisions, including the private enforcement provision and its six-year statute of limitations, the birth certificate requirement, the civil trespass penalty, much of the severability clause, exception for law enforcement and governmental regulatory purposes, exceptions for emergency medical assistance, and exceptions for custodial maintenance and repair. That was something that Mr. Hendrick brought up early, that the original ordinance, as it stands today, has those exceptions in there. So, those were covered. The private cause of action is a central tenet to the enforcement of ordinance 816, because it gives private claimants the ability to receive not only injunctive release, but also statutory damages. Removing this provision would risk rendering the ordinance essentially ineffective, with only classy misdemeanor penalties that amount to a quote slap on the wrist for a serious and knowing violation. It is also concerning that the draft does not tie biological sex to a person's official birth certificate or other governmental record that accurately states biological sex. Government records such as birth certificates play a vital role in confirming one's identity. Without this provision, biological sex would then be based on reproductive system and other physical characteristics, and that's quoted from the ordinance, which leaves both courts and citizens unclear as to what is permissible and what is not, and what is impermissible. There is no clarification of which type of reproductive system is considered male and which type of reproductive system is considered female. And it's kind of wild to think that we have to have those discussions, but this is the day that we live in, and I know that Mr. Covey and Texas Values have fought these battles across the state. Mr. Crowe is...
Can you do that?
Yes.
Good to meet you, keep rolling.
In addition, the other physical characteristics provision is vaguely written, failing to specify which physical characteristics divide biological sex, and exposing the entire ordinance constitutional overbreadth and vagueness, which in turn exposes the city of Odessa to unnecessary liability. So, what he's saying there is the proposed changes, in their opinion, open the city up to liability and the possibility of suit. The language of ordinance 816 as amended on November 12 is constitutionally sound and will withstand any frivolous litigation efforts brought by outside organizations and actors with purely political agenda. We urge you to keep this language as is. Jonathan Sains, President and Attorney for Texas Values, and Jonathan Covey, Director of Policy for Texas Values. So, as these guys, as we got to know them, as they came in last time, I mean, they're experts in this. They do this on a daily basis on issues like the bathroom ordinance and other issues that affect the values and morality across our state. At the very least, I would really suggest, and he asked me to apologize for not being able to be here to meet with you guys, he's just been ill for the last few days, but at the very least, to meet again with Mr. Sains and Mr. Covey and take advantage of their expertise in this area, so that at the end of the day, we do craft an ordinance that does meet the need. Mr. Mitchell asked earlier if this had ever happened, and I said yes. And the reason why I know that is because this happened to my granddaughter, who was working at Chick-fil-A on a night shift. She goes into the stall, comes back out, and here's a man dressed as a woman in that bathroom, you know, and really shocked her and upset her to have to deal with that. So, yes, it is happening in Odessa. It's probably not getting reported to the police, because I'm not sure the police would know what to do with it to a large jury, but these things are happening in our community. As far as the private cause of action, the way I understood it, and I could be wrong, but, you know, that was really an important element, because it did give property owners the right, if they so chose, to limit their bathrooms to males and females as defined in the ordinance. And if someone willfully violated that, then they could take a cause of action against them. So, it did expand that. But I think you guys were taking a serious look at this. We want to end up, at the end of the day, with an ordinance that works. I think everybody sees the need for it, and I would really encourage you to take advantage of the expertise of the attorneys at Texas Values to help you get there.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. We appreciate it.
Renee Phillips.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Phillips.
I hope we don't impinge on the council meeting tonight. I want to tell you, my name's Renee Phillips. For those of you who don't know me, you will see me a lot. I pray for the city of Odessa. I've lived here all my 54 years, and I'm going to be here fighting for our city. I love Odessa. I have children and grandchildren, and I'm asking you to please not change the wording of this ordinance. And the reason why is because anybody posing as somebody else could go into either a men's restroom or a women's restroom and surprise one of my children or grandchildren. Now, I know people make choices in life, and I pray that that choice is never made to where it hurts my children or your children, because it could. I want to tell you that God loves us all. He really does. I'm not here to be condemning. I'm begging you, do not change this, because we need wording that says, it describes a male, whether they're dressed female or male, or a female, whether they're dressed female or male. We need wording that says that they can do something about that. People make choices, choices to go into a man's restroom, or choices to go into a female restroom, and that choice could hurt my child. And that's why I'm here, fighting not only for my child, but other children. And I'm asking you, please do not change the ordinance that's set before you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jason Brechner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. I, sitting here listening, I've never been, had the opportunity to come sit in on one of these meetings. But remind me, was there not 10, 15 years ago, a city ordinance put in that said you could not smoke inside a building? Yes. It was an ordinance. And you sit here today saying you cannot make an ordinance that says men go to men's restrooms and women go to women's restrooms, period. If we can have an ordinance for one, why can we not the other? It's pretty simple in my eyes. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Jamie Barryhill.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate this opportunity, and I want to thank each of you for your service. This is not an easy task. It's one that obviously you had to step up on, and from the community, we appreciate it very much. You know, this thing obviously has kind of fluctuated different ways since the very outset. I appreciated so much what our mayor said, a little different perspective on the whole thing, but as we've continued to listen and as we got an attorney's review, we saw that many things honestly had been stripped from the ordinance that was put in place just a few months ago. Therein lies the problem. And the first question the mayor asked of the people, there was virtually unanimous response. None of us in this community desire men in women's and women in men's restrooms. So, we're all in agreement there. So, I think, again, we should probably stick with what we have. It has some teeth, it effectuates the hearts desire of our community. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Annette Ray.
Your honor to the mayor and to the council. I just had a question. You used that phrase, kiss. Well, keep it simple. Well, I'd say keep it simply safe. I was a teacher for over 20 years, so sometime I need a little clarification. So, when you made a statement earlier about the ordinances being limited to city buildings because you didn't have jurisdiction over the others, I said, I need a lesson, because I got confused. And the confusion is, if there was a law broken at Ector County, as sometime it was, even though it's a different entity in the city than the city, I'm going like, which police department do we call to see about that incident? Like, I'm asking a question. I'm going like, so, I mean, we have an ECISD police, but then we also have our local police, and it seems like we always shifted over, it eventually ends up with the local, city, county, police officers, okay, dealing with the issue? And like, if something happened to me or my children at the grocery store, even though it's a private place of business, I think we're going to call, like, y'all? Okay. So, I'm just saying, I don't think that we should limit this ordinance to just city buildings. I don't spend very much time in city buildings. That's a null and new point. I mean, none of us spend very much time in city buildings. We spend our time out there in businesses, on school campuses, in the hospitals, on the parks, and every other place. So, I think that the ordinance needs to be more exclusive than just the city.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Next.
Thank you for letting me speak. Chris, you've done a good job. I'd just like to say, I went to work a couple weeks ago, and one of my guys that works with me on machines, he come out and he was mad, like, what's going on, bud? He's mad, he says, we were at a restaurant the other day, he says, my granddaughter comes out and says, there was a guy in there putting on makeup and asked her some questions. This is not, this is not good for the city. Like the lady said, we're not here at a city building all the time. We're out in public. We're out in public. We had to see this. Our grandkids, our daughters, our grandsons, how many people are here want to see this happen to their kids? How many?
No.
Absolutely. You know, don't change it. Guys, it's crazy out there. The one we've got to worry about is that man upstairs.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments.
Ronnie Phillips.
Good afternoon, council. I appreciate y'all here. Richard, I'm glad you're back.
Thank you, sir.
For a short time, or whatever, but thank you. I don't agree with everything you did, but you did good, and we'll get to that in a minute. Real quick, I got to tell this on Richard, and the chief back there can thank this. You know, several years back, Dewey Bryant, Sr., was the councilman, and we had trouble with the police department, and we still have trouble with the police department, but I went in to sit down with Richard, and he said, Richard will tell you everything you want to know, if you'll listen to him. He said, well, all this money goes to the fire department, the police department, and he said, no. I said, how about letting them have their cars? So, he got their cars. So, that was simple, three men sat up here in his office, and all of them got their cars, which was a boost to the police department. Next time, the same thing. Richard, you know, if you're going to be a police officer, you're going to go to school, you're going to train for it, so you ought to be paid for it. Odessa is like the highest, third highest in the state, so this is off the topic, and I'm sorry, but I'll get back on it real quick. But what you guys need to do is figure out what to do with the leadership of the police department, because we're in serious trouble. Now, back to what I'm here to do. Thank you, Richard. They got to raise. So, third highest in the state is in Odessa, Texas. This is where we all come in. Quality of life. The quality of life is not to walk in some pervert standing in a bathroom with your child, your grandchild, whoever. If you fall under that category of LGBTQ or whatever, that's your business. That's your own business in your house, but the percentages of the United States is like 600th of a percent claims to be transgender. So, don't bring that to Odessa, Texas. If the ACLU wants to come and fight us, bring them on, because this is our city. We live here, I'm like the lady, I've lived here for 50-something years in Odessa, and this is not the city I grew up in, this is not the city my children grew up in. I have two sets of children, 15 years apart. It's not the city that they grew up in, and today, this is the worst city than it's ever been, but it can also be changed, because people like this will come in here and they will make a difference. And they'll let you make a difference, if you'll stand up for what's right. And if you'll put your big boy pants on and say, okay, we're going to do this, I don't care what anybody else says, this is our city, we live here, you don't want to come fight with us, okay? Thank you very much.
Counsel, that's all the cards for this item.
Any other comments by counsel? Not, let's move on.
I do have a clarification. Just looking at the agenda now, it's the... The biological is stricken in red. I'm just double-checking that the biological is sticking, as far as the proposal and identification, the word biological.
That's a question for Dan, but I have the ordinance here. I think the definition of biological sex is still in the proposed ordinance?
It came from birth sex to biological sex. That was the only change. That's why, that's the second change, so the biological is in red, and then the second change, what we added, was in red. Yeah, from birth sex to biological.
Something, the biological is important. I mean, look at the House of Representatives, they actually are using it right now in terms, and also in various other states. So, biological is something that's a 2024 word to help identify compared to opposite sex or sex.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we would need to go and be a little bit clearer about male, female, biological. Yeah.
I think we also need to put this wording back in there.
Well, this is just a discussion. This is a discussion. It'll be on the agenda.
We need to put this wording back in there.
It'll be for discussion and vote when it's brought on the agenda for now. Any other comments? If not, let's move on. Number eight, discuss and consider the annual review of the Code of Conduct ordinance.
Yes, Mayor and council, so in, go to my sheet, in 2019, the city council approved a Code of Conduct ordinance, and within the ordinance, it states that council has to review it annually, and if they want any changes, that we can bring forth any changes. So, this is just for y'all's review. If y'all don't have any changes and would like to keep it as it stands, there is a statement that, of acknowledgement, that you have read and reviewed this form, and it would need to be signed, and I'll keep it for my files as it states in the ordinance itself. So, that's what this is.
Thank you, Norma.
Thank you, Norma. Go ahead, Dan.
This is a discussion and also to take action.
Oh, we had to get action?
Yeah, discuss and consider. Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Counsel, have you ever had a chance to read it? It's quite lengthy, but it's very good information. Okay. If everyone has read it and reviewed it, then you need to take action to approve we read it? Or what do we actually?
There's a quiz, pop quiz.
Pop quiz. I hate pop quizzes. Open book, though, right?
You would you would just approve it.
Okay.
Make a motion second.
I entertain a motion to approve. As drafted in the ordinance number. We have a motion by Councilman Thompson. Second by Councilman Canal. Is there any discussion?
I did have a question.
Sure, Craig. Wait, what number?
When you get out of the into the implementation and then into the section, that seems to be pretty boilerplate.
Which section is it? Which number?
At the end, 1-4-5-4 implementation. And then after that, it's section two, section three, four, five, six, seven.
Give me a second. You have the four implementation on page nine of 11. Okay.
So that seems to be pretty boilerplate stuff that's on kind of everything. But like, section five talks about if if a person violating any provisions of this ordinance is deemed guilty of a misdemeanor, what in here would we violate?
Well, conflict of interest, there's there's being ugly, and there's all kind of.
All kinds of things.
Yeah.
Put yourself out of representing the council when you don't.
Taking a kickback or a payment.
All various things like that.
So.
It'll give me free barbecue for a year for a vote. I violated it.
Is that me?
For free barbecue.
Okay, well, I was just I was just clarifying that. This was holding us to these standards by that.
But councilman, this is where y'all can discuss it. If you want us to add something, tell us. And we bring it back to you next meeting. I mean, it's not like, Norma, correct me if I'm wrong, not like it has to be done right now.
Correct.
I mean, think of
One of the
Did you say next week? You mean next meeting?
Next year.
Yes, sir, next meeting, whatever that is.
Okay, when do we have another meeting?
Not next week, but next week, next year.
Okay.
One of the questions I had, and it's you know, cause for a little confusion on a lot of this stuff, not this in particular necessarily, but this to me seems like something that would be a really good group discussion. Where you sit around and you say, all right, well, you know, I got a problem with this. Well, why do you have a problem with this? Is that, you know, is that when we do it now? Is that the board retreat we've talked about? Is that, you know, when when that's our, when's the opportunity to do that? When's the appropriate time to do that?
I would probably put it on a board retreat. That would probably be in January, like we y'all discussed. Have it then. That could be on the agenda. Hey, let's look at this. Let's see what we want to add, and then we can discuss it. Go from there.
Quite detailed.
Yeah, it is.
It is, and that's I was kind of curious about that.
Bring that up.
Because you would have all day at a board retreat.
Yeah.
Where you could spend an hour on this, discussing, hey, I want to add this or take this away. You know, that that would be my recommendation, do it at a board retreat.
What Norma's gonna do is send an email with an invite around. But then when we had a cyber attack, we hadn't been able to get the date circulated. So we'd like to all get together maybe on a Saturday, January, February, to review this and other things like that. Have us time to get to know each other better, to cover some city issues, invite the media, the public for discussion, and have some in-depth time to delve into something rather than it seems like sort of always a rushed Tuesday night. I mean, I just
It is. Unfortunately, Mayor Council, idiots. It's always, and you know, but but it works with opportunity in a to go go off campus, so to speak, and
Let's table this for, and we may need a motion on that. I'm sure we need a motion to table it to the board retreat. Let's go into greater detail at a later time. If that works for y'all, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we tabled this.
Oh, he beats it. Do you want to second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Stoker's second. Ed does first.
I had asked Richard about that.
Yes, sir.
But we need to sit down and have, well, we can discuss something, especially me as a rookie.
I think that's, as soon as we have email working that's circulating. Very frustrating, cyber attacks. All right, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, a little favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Curious unanimously to table it. Let's go to number nine. This is Councilman Haney.
So before y'all have a heart attack or panic on anything, so the one thing that Mr. Alex, will you come up? So our discussion, and the reason I brought this up, to put a moratorium on any kind of new construction right now, especially on building roads or anything, is we're shorthanded. We're in this time of the year when it gets cold, water lines start breaking. We have, we have all kinds of problems. We have 70 to 80-year-old infrastructure in. We have sewer lines falling backwards, especially out west on the west side of town. 22nd was one of them. One of the roads that's the sewer lines falling back. My deal is, is to, let's get the city employees to where we can start fixing some of these water lines and replacing some of this as fast as we can. And if we put a moratorium on building for one month, I'm asking for one month, we could schedule, these guys could have time to work on how they run to attack this 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 problem. Because new water systems are coming on. We're increasing pressure to take care of stuff that's in outer areas. And so some of us have new stuff and don't live in these areas where we have 60, 80-year-old problems. When the line goes, that means we're out of water. We don't get to go to work. We don't get to go do stuff. So I'm just asking for a month where we just put a stop to taking any new permits or scheduling anything that does this. And the reason being is, guys, we're gonna get, we're gonna get busy, and it's already happening now. Gilbert's side of town is doing it. Mr. Mitchell's side of town's doing it. Of course, West Odessa's doing it. You've already spoke about it. So we already know that's being fit, get it on to be fixed. But I'm just asking that we stop assigning this. The one thing that we can do is to, if you need something to pay for this with, we have ODC money, which is approved for this infrastructure fix. We could take that money and pay for all of this through the ODC money.
Did you have a question for Alex?
Alex, I would, I just wanted you to, you know this city. You've been living, and anything that I said that's wrong, just let me know.
So this is, I wrote up a little bit about this, and I'll kind of get into it. So our vision for the utilities department is to proactively and responsibly use all available resources to provide citizens and businesses of Odessa with the highest quality of water and sewer services. That's what we do. Our department understands where the current state is of where our infrastructure is at. And we have been working diligently to address and, I mean, to address all current and future problems within our control. With that being said, we do have several factors that hinder us to proceeding with fixing our problems. Personnel, contractors, and at last, funding. Due to the age of the construction during our city's growth in the 50s through the 80s, most of our infrastructure has reached its lifespan. Our current infrastructure is comprised of 750 miles of water and 575 miles of sewer. That's an extensive amount when you when you consider it. That's from here to Louisiana, past Houston. So I've put some numbers together that kind of explains PVC, cast iron, water, sewer, that kind of stuff. So anything pre-1990, so pre-1990 and before, that was pre-PVC, pretty much. So we currently have, non-PVC is 373 miles of pipe. So that would be cast iron, concrete, anything like that. This is water. Pre-1990 would be 400. So 400 miles, if you were to replace 400 miles of pipe on the two current projects that I have, which is Lancaster and County Road West, those are three miles worth of pipe. It's 8,500, approximately 8,500 feet. Lancaster is approximately 7,500. So it's about three miles worth of pipe. We've budgeted 14 million. We look, I believe it's gonna come in more, about 12 million. Okay? When you do the amount on 400 miles of pipe that is pre-1990, that would be $1.6 billion. To do a fourth of that, 100 miles would be 400 million. I don't believe that we have that in our budget. And I don't believe that it's possible to go to a CEO for that, to ask the citizens to pay for that kind of money. We are doing everything in the utilities department that we have to look for projects, to figure out master plans, how we get things fixed, what's the next project. We do have quite a bit, you know, upcoming stuff going on. We have the Darrington plant that needs to be rehabbed. The water treatment plant is currently in a in a rehab state. We're getting closer to finishing that. That is not going to, nothing with that project is to increase pressure through our pipes. It is to strictly help with the treatment process. We're doing filters, clear wells. It has nothing to do with our infrastructure. So we're not going to be pushing more power or more PSI through the system with this new upgrade. But it is an upgrade that is needed, and there is not, there is more than just that upgrade that we're currently doing. We're gonna have to put more money into that down the line. This this $85 million rehab is just portions of the plant. It's not a whole rehab. Same thing kind of with the Darrington. We're looking at getting new bones before we get a whole new plant. A new plant would cost anywhere from 150 to 200 out of the Darrington. We're looking at sinking in about 65 million, 62, to get us new bones and then get us a master plan to revamp that out there. So we are doing the best that we can within our department with the funds that we've got. We have allocated some larger road projects, like Mr. Stoker said, that we've got some extra money. We're doing Lancaster. We're doing County Road West. And then our TAPS crew that I'm gonna bring to you in council meeting is we do replace lines anywhere 2,000 feet or less, and that's pretty much what we do in neighborhoods, right? That's not any of your transmission lines, anything like that. So we handle all the TAPS contracts through that, which we have a list of projects that we run through the master plan that are just not transmission lines. So we are doing the best of our ability with the funding and personnel that we have. If we were to go and try and bring on, you know, 10 or 15 more projects with it would be in transmission lines, we would have to outsource quite a bit of those. It would be with engineering firms, and that is where we would look into assessments. I don't think that it would happen overnight. I think some of this would take a little bit and time to figure out where, not where our issues are, but figure out how we proceed in, okay, do we do this line first? Where do we, how do we handle this? How do we do this? But I wanted to give you guys those figures, and then I have the figures for sewer, too. 400, we have 393 miles pre-1990 of sewer. So 400,000 miles. We don't have, we currently don't have any numbers right now, but I took it off of our TAPS contract that I'm bringing to you guys. So three miles of pipe would be $9 million. Oh, and this, I'm sorry, and these are both only 12-inch pipes. So we have anything on the water side from 6 to 30 or higher. And then on the sewer side, we have anywhere from 6 to 48 inches. So if you were just to replace any 12-inch on sewer, three miles, that would be 1.2 billion. That would be at 100 miles, 300 million. So those are just some numbers that I wanted to give to you guys so you guys understood. If we were to go and try and replace 100 miles worth of cast iron pipes, this is what it would cost.
So Alex.
Yes, sir.
Your guys aren't, they're not involved in the new developments?
No, sir.
Okay, so do you spend any manpower in the new developments as far as placing lines or that type of thing?
The only new development work that utilities handles is TAPS. So if there is a commercial tap, then we will go inspect it to make sure that the tap was handled correctly. But we do not go out and inspect the lines, anything with new development that's through Public Works.
But the contractors place the new lines?
Yes.
Per city specification?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Unless it's an added line that we have to add, like a sewer line, like we did line P, line Q.
A main line?
A main, a huge main line. There are some main liners that they do get into, you know, a 12-inch or something like that, that Public Works or Joe's team would, you know, make the contractors handle.
We could do it, but need $2 billion. That's what I just heard you add, add up in my head, including the wastewater sewer lines.
2.8 billion.
2.8 billion?
2.8 billion.
Billion.
So so yes, that is a large number, and you hear complaints about cities where, well, they're just pushing things down the road. Well, it's, there's a balance, right? We budget every year for a certain amount of replacement.
We do.
We were fortunate that we have the Pioneer contract, and we can do a little more than that. We did 25 million set aside for this year. That's all good news. But the balance is, if we go issue 2 point, just 2 billion, just say 2 billion, the ratepayers can't afford to pay that.
Right.
Okay? Last year, Alex and his crew asked for a 6% rate increase, right? That's to provide the services and replace lines, but that request was cut to 3%. So there's, again, there's a balance. We can fix every problem, but you have to have the money to do it. And the only people, the only way we get the money is from the ratepayers. That's where it comes from.
Let me stop you there and ask a question. Are there no federal state grants?
There is.
Because I know there was one mentioned about the water, but we didn't have our audits. We couldn't get the water tower. But what about lines?
There, yes, there are.
There's money in that, too.
There are things within the Texas Water Development Board that we could go. The issue with a lot of that is that our per capita, per household in certain areas of our city are too high. Texas Water Development Board will not let us or give us the money because we don't, we make too much money. We are overqualified for that because we should be able to pay it through our revenues that we receive from selling water.
The Water Development Board loan that we just missed out on was exactly that. It was a low-interest loan.
Low-interest loan.
Not a grant of money.
They do have certain things, you know, for the Darrington, like for wastewater plants. If you can have certain amount of violations, you can apply for these loans. But it is a lengthy process where you have to have certain people come out and look at, like the EPA's got to come out. There's several people that have to come out and do site visits and this and that to see if you can actually get some of these loan forgiveness loans. But for stuff like lines, pipes, certain things like that, we don't qualify for any of those, to my understanding. Now, I could be wrong, but I, when I met with the Texas Water Development Board, that was not an option for for what we handle. But we could see if we could zone, so maybe in a certain part of the city, and we only touch these two neighborhoods. And then we would have to provide information to Texas Water Development Board to say we are only going to use the money allocated in these areas and show them that we can, that we qualify for that.
That may be something that we have to So the reason I brought this up, guys, because this is a real number, and this is gonna be a real problem that that's gonna haunt us for the next, well, you guys for the next four, me for the next two.
And I Maybe for the next, for a long time. That's why I wanted maybe kick this to the
So you guys pushed on running for, to fix this, to help fix this. So for me, this left me an opportunity to ask you guys, are you gonna, are we gonna help, or how are we gonna do this?
I think moratorium is a wrong idea, but I do, you got the right idea. We've got to figure out some, some solution and start at least a process, a plan, a master plan.
I agree.
At least start, and let's start a little more aggressively than we've done in the past, because this is
So so pretty much, this is where we're at for the line breaks. Our line breaks are excessive. This is where, especially 42nd Street South. And we have a hydro, we have Hydro Max, we have contracted them out who is coming in and doing a valve assessment. So they are going and they're giving us, if the, if it breaks or if it's broken, if it works, how many turns does it close? You know, a 12-inch needs to turn X amount, right? Maybe it's not turning all the way. Well, you've got to go and replace this one. So they are about a quarter of the way through. We are currently working through this. This is our best way to assess our water system. You can go in and replace a certain amount of valves. We only have 13,423 as of before a system went down. And then that's not counting some of the new stuff coming back on. So 13,000 valves, anywhere between 6-inch to 20, or, you know, 30-inch, that we would have to replace would be a lot cheaper. Now, it's not gonna fix your brake problem, but it's gonna fix your water loss. It's gonna fish, fix how many people are without water. It's going to fix so many things to get our city back to where it needs to be. And if we can stop the water, then we're able to then go in and figure out, okay, this line's breaking X amount of times with new valves. We need to go in and replace this.
Richard? So my point is, and I understand your reasoning, but putting a moratorium on growth does not does not help us fix or do anything to help us fix the old lines at all. And it, in the long run, it could hurt us. New growth leads to additional revenue, which shares the, the cost of all the improvements that we need to make with everybody else. And, and new growth, right now, is not taxing Alex's guys because his guys aren't, aren't building those, that infrastructure. It's the contractors and the developers that are. His crews are doing exactly what they need to do and maintaining our current system.
And that's pretty much in this, like Mr. Haney did say, I will say, that's, that's all they're doing right now. We are reactive. We are a hundred percent reactive.
Would they do anything else, is what I'm saying?
Yeah.
They would not be putting in new pipes.
Yeah, they would not be doing anything else, no. We don't.
I think what Councilman Haney just articulated is, we would like to become more proactive. We'd like to have a plan.
Yes, sir.
I don't care if it's to fix every valve, and then it may take twenty years, but at least, at least write it down and start following it, so you get the oldest ones first, or the ones that are breaking the most first, and create a priority system, and.
To Alex's credit and his department, I think they do have a basic plan.
We do.
Okay? And he just hasn't had the opportunity to share that with you?
Yeah, Public Works.
Okay.
There is.
They, he can tell you exactly how many miles of old pipe that we have, and we can schedule projects out the future, but as you heard, it's two-billion-dollar problem, okay? So, yes, we need to take a bite of that apple, or bite of the elephant, every year and do as much as we can. If council chooses to do more than that, then we've gotta talk about issuing debt, go out there and find those grants.
But we shouldn't stop growth elsewhere. I mean, just not put a stop on it.
No.
We should continue to start, keep growing a little bit.
This was just for a month until we could get him to figure out where we're at, what's going on.
If you go, if you, if you stop it for a month and you, you hurt every developer in town, the jobs they provide, the, the houses that they're building, the property taxes that are coming to the city, plus the water and sewer, plus the TAPS, so you have all this revenue that follows all this housing growth that's going, I know what's going on that side of town, and I know that there's some going over here, too, but the number of homes coming on right now under construction, my guess right now is really close to two-thousand homes. That's lots of property tax, lots of TAPS, lots of new people, lots of property tax, and you can't just shut down your revenue stream and just stop and try to, going, going backwards is unacceptable, in my opinion. You've gotta keep going forward, and as you said, Richard said, do it all, it's a balancing act. But so far, this council, the press councils, a lot of people in this audience are debt resilient or perverse. They don't want debt, but nobody likes debt. I was in business forty years, I never liked that. There's times when, if you're growing, it requires it. And we're growing, and we're growing at a pace, and I think in twenty-five, you're gonna see more growth with the oil patch, and I think it's not gonna stop there. So, I'm just saying, we're shooting ourselves in the foot besides costing jobs and hurting developers, and I'll let, I'll give them your phone number when you say they can't go annex six-hundred-and-thirty-three acres that Mr. Lee's fixing to do and put in another two-thousand homes. And he's providing water, sewer, and paving half of Grandview, and paving half of Yukon, and paving the intersection at Yukon and Grandview, he's having to pay for. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of upside to continue to develop, is all I'm saying.
Yes.
Is there anyone from the audience, any cars from the audience?
Yes.
Okay, let's have our first speaker.
Alex, let me have a quick question first. How many people is your department short?
Would you like my estimation? Like, okay, I think that we need, it's in my packet, right here in front of me, sorry. Which, which division? I've got five of them. So, I've got water treatment, every single one of them? Okay. Let me go through my packet, so.
Because to get proactive, I feel like you need to be fully staffed.
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's in, it's in the overview that I missed a couple of weeks ago.
That's cause Sean, as he talks.
I don't know where she's at. So, at the water plant, we're, we're looking for two more plant operators. We currently only have one person on staff at night. So, that one person is in control of the entire city water. So, that is towers, that is all of the water plant. So, we need, I need another person there at night to make sure that if he falls down the stairs on the second floor, or gets stuck in our nineteen-fifty-eight elevator, that we can, somebody can get him out. So, that's at the water treatment plant. I'm glad I brought this. The lab is, is fully staffed. We're looking for another chemist also. So, we would like to add another chemist there because we are adding more, more people are asking us for services, our services at our lab. The next one is where we get into a little, okay. So, currently with our, in water distribution and sewer collection, we're short, sorry. We're, have we have fifteen field personnel? I need twenty-four extra, so I need forty total. That is just to do normal things. Now, that would replace.
You're fully short.
Uh, sorry, twenty-four. I'm, I'm short twenty-four. Now, that would include taking the TAPS contract away. So, that would be doing everything in-house. That would be line replacements in neighborhoods, TAPS, fire hydrants, installations, you name it, whatever we do with that TAPS contract, we would move that in-house. Now, if we wanna keep it where it's at, then you take another seven people off of that forty, right? So, you're at the thirty-three. But we currently only have fifteen. That's taking care of seven-hundred miles of water, five-hundred miles of sewer. Our Darrington plant, let me see, we have one, two, we have three vacancies, and we're asking for six more, six more, which would be another crew leader, maintenance workers, electrician techs, and then some pretreatment side, liquid waste, and then like grease trap inspectors, things like that that we're short on.
So, you need nine?
Yes, sir. Pretty, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yes, sir.
Are these positions currently in your budget?
No, sir.
Are they budgeted for?
No, sir.
Zero-based budget?
No, sir. They were, they were.
That does not mean we can't add them back into it. The money's there for it.
So, therefore, we're not even advertising for these positions to be filled?
At the current moment, no, sir.
Well, they also.
Zero-based budget. So, we have placed in for a couple that, but due to the network, I don't think they've been up, but I, I think we've put up for at least ten to fifteen, which were at, which were in the budget that we've asked for. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna cut you off, I'll get you to move forward. So, enormous speakers?
Yes, sir. Bill Cleaver?
Thank you, Alex.
Absolutely, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Alex, we appreciate it.
Sorry, man, to put you on the spot.
You're good.
Evening, council. Mayor? Good to have you back, Richard.
Evening, Ms. Cleaver.
I got kinda confused when you went from millions to billions, you know? I just got so many fingers and toes here. When you mentioned shut down, no permitted for a whole month, tell you what that'll do to me, my little organization. That means I have twenty-five to thirty million standing around with no check for that whole month of January, and those guys will be trying to figure out how they're gonna pay for those Christmas gifts and stuff they bought in December. So, it, it would break me, and plus it'd throw my, the planning that we have already made in the last couple of weeks, it'll throw my plan just out of kilter, you know? We got, we have decided we're gonna build X number of houses next year. That, that one month would, would really hurt me. I'm, I'm talking to designers now on some structures that we're trying to build, you know, and I would like to know what Deedmore would think, you know, with people standing around. I got twenty-five to thirty people standing around, they got hundreds, you know? So, I, I bet you they're not in favor of this type deal. Someone mentioned water and sewer taps. Here's why I have a problem with water and sewer taps. My first water and sewer tap on that first house is thirteen-hundred dollars. On the second, third, fourth, and fifth house is ten-thousand dollars each house. What I don't understand, the same contractor, it's not the city employee, the same contractor's digging the same hole with the same backhoe, with the same twenty-foot piece of PVC and a half a load of gravel. How do we go from fifteen-hundred to ten-thousand dollars? And I think the reason is because we don't have enough competition or approved vendors on that list. I have a plumber that would be interested in getting on that approved vendor list, but he has been beat down so hard by the city that he, he won't even apply. He can probably do it for, for me for at least half that price. I don't have a problem paying, but if I pay ten-thousand dollars extra for a house, I guarantee that homeowner is gonna get that ten-thousand-dollar bill. I'm not gonna eat that, you know? I can eat fifteen-hundred dollars, but it's hard for me to eat ten-thousand dollars. I just get choked up when that, that happens. So, if someone could just explain to me why you wanna shut down development for one month or two months or whatever, I mean, the city is not doing these water and sewer taps. That's what I do, the water and sewer, the city's not doing it. Madrid is doing all the water and sewer taps. So, how are we telling up city folks to do that? I just question how. You don't answer?
Thanks, Ms. Cleaver, appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Who's our next speaker?
Jeff Russell.
Jeff, come on.
Last topic of this meeting, I promise.
But no, I, I think as I talked to Mr. Haney, I kinda know where his, where his thoughts were, maybe his heart was, is just trying to focus on some of these problems that spread across our, our city from east to west, north to south. I would, you know, I'd really encourage you guys to go back and read the memo that was produced for ODC from Jeff Moore, talking about how some of the ODC money could be used even on the existing infrastructure. You know, can't fund all of it, but maybe could fund a portion of it out of ODC funds, and there's, there's some mechanisms to do that. Also, don't forget that we have, and it's not a lot of money, but it is some, some millions. There's money in impact fee accounts that, that are specifically designed by zone throughout the city, the three zones of the city to, to, to do some of those repairs and replacements. So, my, my, my only comment would be to, you know, look high, look low, look in every account, shake the, you know, shake the, shake the coffers hard and see what we can find. I think this is a critical, critical point across our city. I know the water pressure at my home over on Red Bud is so low in the evenings, sometimes you have a hard time taking a shower, and that's not an exaggeration. So, you know, I, we've got, we've got problems all across our, our fair city, and so, just, just look high and low, if we can apply for grants, whatever we can do. It is a huge elephant, but you're, you're exactly right, we gotta start eating it one bite at a time, so, so, look at, look at all those places.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Chris Crow.
We just need to get you guys a seat up here, since we're the council.
Thanks, guys. So, I would have a suggestion, and listen to all this, and I think it's partially a great idea, but I do understand shutting down development in the city of Odessa is just not an issue. Well, my suggestion would be, would be to possibly put a moratorium on spending city money for new construction. When we have our developers that are paying for infrastructure, fantastic, when, on those projects. But for example, we just used, what, five million dollars of ODC money as infrastructure to extend Gerardo Drive all the way to Yukon. That's city money, any way you look at it. So, the question you have to ask is, is when you have this person that's sitting on the corner of University and Tom Green that has a water rupture and doesn't have water, why can't we spend money to fix the infrastructure here when we can spend five million dollars out in northeast Odessa to provide new infrastructure for a new golf course and a new equestrian center? Because that's the way they see it. So, I don't think it's a, it's a moratorium on new growth and new business, but maybe it's a moratorium on spending municipal funds for anything other than, hey, let's fix what we got. You know, it's kinda like when your wife comes to you and says, hey, baby, I wanna, you know, I wanna re-landscape the whole yard and all of that, and you're like, well, that's well good and great and wonderful, but, you know, I've got a, I've got a gas line that just collapsed in the backyard that we gotta get fixed first, right? So, that, I think that would be what, more I heard out of what Mr. Haney was looking for, not shutting down the city by any stretch, that'd be crazy. We gotta have our growth. Now, one question I had for, for, for you, Richard, is, you know, I know in the budget, you know, we, we had, we were looking at a six percent increase, we budgeted for a three percent increase in water, three and a half percent increase in sewer, and I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at the budget yet, but we budgeted actually for a loss in income for water and sewer when we've increased rates by three and three and a half percent. Didn't make any sense to me.
And, and we shouldn't deficit budget, I mean, but that just goes to the point I was making, the balance.
Sure.
The, to raise the revenue that you need to completely replace these lines.
It's impossible.
It's impossible. We can't do it. We can't put that burden on the ratepayers. As it was, you heard of the vacancies that we did not fund, even with the three percent, okay? So, there's a balance there that we have to hit to provide, give him the employees that he needs to do to do his job.
Agreed.
And to repair these lines? That's Siri cocking. So, yeah, it, it doesn't make sense, and you can deficit budget for a year or two and plan to spin down your fund balance if you have it for appropriate reasons, but you can't continue to do that, cause you won't have any fund balance.
Sure. My whole point was, and I made this comment to the prior council, I'll make it to you guys. I spent a lot of time going through the, the city budget, and there are so many parts of that budget that do not make sense. This is just one of them. And so, this is a great opportunity for you guys to kinda look and see, do we need to do some budget amendments and some budget updates? Because I think that would help you get exactly what you're looking for, because if we budgeted for the true income that we're getting from our water plant as opposed to negative water, maybe we can afford some of these positions that are there. Not all of them, by any stretch of imagination, but I would love to see, more than anything, Alex, get the, the help he needs.
I'd say the budget that I've seen makes sense, just.
It makes sense, just not good sense, okay?
I appreciate everything. I hate to call time on you, but we're right out of time, but I do appreciate the comments, and we are looking at that. Is there another speaker?
Dallas Kennedy?
Dallas, come up here, sir.
Sir, I'll make it very clear. The one I just heard from Alex there, it sounds like we've got an emergency in this city. Maybe you, I don't know what the legal way to do it, maybe you could declare a state of emergency so that we can get rid of the zero-based budgeting, so that we can get twenty-four more people out there to fix the water plant. We need to completely redo the city budget. I know it was just done, but get rid of zero-based budgeting, if you have to declare a state of emergency to do that, so that we can hire water people then do it. But let's get them on the, let's get them on the website tomorrow, well, we get the website back up so we can hire them. As soon as we get our website.
Dallas, we appreciate your comments. We do appreciate them.
Those are all the cars.
Those are all the cars, okay. I do appreciate everyone's discussion. You know the problems, it's in front of us. We're gonna work towards solutions, guys. We just ask for your patience as we try to work through this. We may add that to the agenda at our workshop we're gonna have hopefully coming up. Okay, number ten, discuss and consider establishing board and committee duties for the mayor and council members, Norma.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. So, the council serves on boards and commissions within, within the city, and this is basically a list of the boards. I did attach some information about the boards and the meeting times, so it's just a discussion on how council among y'all would like to ditty up the boards. There are two boards that are not listed on this list, but they were created at a later time, which is the Municipal Court Committee. Council member Cornell serves on that committee, and two replacements are needed for that particular committee.
Okay.
And they're normally held as needed, but lately have been held once a month. Basically, right now, the purpose for the committee that's at hand is to interview for a new associate municipal court judge, so that's just a little brief highlight. The next one is the Fentanyl and opioid crisis committee. Councilmember Cornell is also on that committee, and they're held once a month, those meetings. And, so, if you have any questions on that one, I believe he'll be able to provide you a brief summary on that.
I think we need to reappoint these, but that needs to be done during the council meeting, correct? Or now?
It's listed as y'all can appoint it now.
Okay. Obviously, I think it's appropriate to replace former mayor, Councilman Mata, Councilman Swanner. I don't know whether appropriate thing is just to serve the same people there, I mean, I don't know how y'all have done it in the past, I'm not, I'm not trying to do anything, I'm just trying to get it done.
And council.
Do you have based on council interest?
Yes.
Gotcha.
And council, I will make a note that in, on the Odessa Housing Finance Corps, they did change their bylaws, and they do not allow any elected officials on that board, so.
Who was that on? Who's the finance?
Denise Swanner.
Oh, Denise Swanner.
And I believe.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Mr. Mata was on there too, I believe.
He was.
That's.
Odessa Housing Finance Corporation. So, that will need to go towards a outside citizens that has interest in that.
So, maybe it makes sense to ask the councilmen that are here and already on committees, do y'all want to continue to serve on those, or would y'all like to switch? That's, I mean, if y'all are already on, if y'all want to stay on, I'll say leave it, but it's up to y'all.
I think Thompson's on some too, that he can stay on.
Yeah, I'm on the MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is part of, you know, like West County Road, that they've had on this deal for 20 years. We go so far out, it's, you know, I'd be dead for any of these things you've done, but it's a, it's a lot of learning, it's a big learning curve, and I've got four years on this, I'd like to stay on there.
Like stay on all the three of those?
Which are, yeah.
MoTran, partnership.
The partnership, I will, yes.
Okay.
MoTran, somebody else can take that if they want to. They meet at 8:30 in the morning and.
Not your favorite time.
That's not my favorite time, okay?
And I.
My age prevents me from doing 8:30, unless it's council.
Let me ask this question.
With Mr. Mata vacating, MoTran, I've written my name on next to it.
I need two volunteers for MoTran, who wants them? Come on.
I'd like to volunteer for MoTran.
I'm going to, for right now, I'm just going to bark through Denise and just put Craig and add MoTran, just because you just said it. And you lost one because you're on Odessa Housing, MoTran.
Fentanyl is also handy for at-large, because of your compass.
All right, I'm going to pick on Gilbert next. Gilbert, you're on Animal Shelter, you got, you're on Animal Shelter, Keep Odessa Beautiful, Odessa Arts, Intergovernmental Project Committee, you want to stay there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman Vasquez is going to keep the four he has. I'm going to go to Greg, you're next, you have Downtown Odessa Animal Shelter Advisory.
Downtown Odessa doesn't exist.
That's the default now, it's actually a different organization in that city.
Yeah, it don't exist.
So, I need to strike through it, it's no longer.
Yeah, it doesn't exist.
Hold on. And, hold that thought, you can probably have one or two more if you want them, but let's go to Chris. Chris, you're on Mayor's Drug and Crime Prevention, Compliance Committee, Ex officio, and Downtown Odessa's gone too then.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm also on the faith-based ministry too that we formed.
I apologize, a little bit louder.
Faith-based ministry that we formed, Greg and I are on that. We would like to stay if we could.
You and who?
Me and Greg.
Oh, Greg, okay, I'm sorry, faith-based ministry?
Yeah, that's the one that does the blankets for the homeless and.
Ministry, Dallas, fine, ministry. And add that to Chris and Craig, okay? Faith-based ministry, okay?
So, Compliance Committee, is that ODC?
Yes.
Is there only one spot for that?
All right.
To my knowledge, yes.
I want to go to, I'm going to start with you, Craig, I put you in Denise's spot only because it was just logical. Add a MoTran, you, do you want to keep that on the fireman's pension board?
That's fine.
Get on it, like you say, and Permian Basin Regional Planning Commission?
That's fine.
Okay, got that one?
You're striking that, you said MoTran.
Put your remark was, Eddie, do you want to have MoTran?
Can be anything you want.
A tax incentive committee, would you have noticed what that is?
That's no longer, that's been dissolved.
Strike that one. You're on MoTran Odessa, Midland Odessa, Urban Transit, Easy Rider, basically, Easy Rider. Stay there?
Yeah.
Sir, just, just so you'll know, that meets about 1:30, I think on Wednesday's the last.
That's a good day.
Okay, that's fine, just.
We have a good day.
All right, that leaves myself, Cal, Council of Governments, that's, I want to stay on, I want to be on that, let's partnership be on that. MoTran, do I need to, anybody else want to be on MoTran? I don't care if you want to be there, I'll stay there. Okay, I'll stay. Risk management, anybody want to be on risk management, or leave me on it?
I'll be risk management.
Okay, I'm going to add risk management to Councilman Thompson, that's risk management instead of MoTran, risk management. I'm crossing that out.
Is that on with VIVET, the risk management? I got put on that as well.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Were you on that? I didn't know.
Add Gilbert to that one too then, apparently, Gilbert. Risk management. All right, and I'm also on Easy Rider unless somebody else wants to be on Easy Rider. Everybody want to be on Easy Rider? Okay, so that leaves me, I'll stay, I guess, that leaves one MoTran left, right? Because you don't want to be on MoTran, you got a risk for you.
Yeah, we, we've got two on MoTran, we had Mata and.
Craig's on MoTran now, I need one more on MoTran, if I got it right. Who wants to be on MoTran?
We have three spots.
He's going to hit it.
No, you're on.
I'm on MoTran.
You must have two MoTrans then, you have two Easy Riders or two MoTrans?
We've got two.
I'm an ex officio, apparently.
It almost looks like two voting spots and an ex officio.
Two voting spots and one ex officio.
Right.
So, I need one more voting spot. Anybody want to serve for what? MoTran.
Was that not me, Eddie, and then you would stay ex officio?
Well, because I got you.
I'm one on MoTran.
Oh, he's on MoTran, never mind, sorry. Yeah, Craig's on MoTran. Is that everybody? We got them all? Does that make sense?
Yes.
It's not, well.
Anybody else we're missing?
Yeah, well, I, well, I've got a, my appointment to ODC is.
That's going to be the regimen.
Well, that's council.
That's at 6:00.
This is, no, 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 ten, this is only for, our council only.
Okay, good.
So, are there any other opportunities with these? Are these just, is this it? Like, there's one, like, one spot on Keep Odessa Beautiful, one spot on compliance? Because I'm, I'm curious about those two.
I can check on the compliance committee because they do have outlined their eligibility as far as how many members, so I can check on that.
And then, like, the Parks Foundation, I'd be interested in that.
What we do is, when we get this cleaned up, printed.
Because that's what I was curious about, can we parse out the three who we need to remove?
Right, got that done, let's clean that up, show everybody what they're on now, and then if there's extra, bring them to the next work session.
Okay.
And we'll sign them.
Like, get vacancies and what we need to fill in, because this, this I can't tell.
Yeah, now it's too, I got too much riding on it.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Because we just did something?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve those positions we just, so moved by Councilman Cornell, and then second about Vasquez. All right, all those, any discussion?
There is a, just to mention, there's a court, municipal court security meeting that it happens twice a year that I'm on.
Are you on that one too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, court security, add that to Greg's court security, I don't have that on my list, court security.
It meets the rarely.
Okay, and if, once y'all take, if y'all are on any others that aren't on here, be sure and tell Norma, she'll add you on here.
We did have the municipal court committee, nobody.
Oh.
Two people.
I thought Cornell was on it.
Yes, but we're needing.
Oh, you know the one.
There's, there's two for the committee.
On the what?
Two for me, security and also.
Municipal Court Committee.
You can put me there.
Okay, put Eddie on that one. What about that fentanyl, we just need one on it?
Two.
The other one too?
Yes, sir.
Wants to be on the fentanyl opioids.
I'll do that.
That'd be great, Craig.
Or, Chris one, give Chris one, you've got enough, edit Chris.
Yeah, I'll take that.
The opioid?
Well, you're going to kill yourself.
Just letting you know when it is, as a weather.
I know.
A lot of this is only as needed.
All right. There's a motion on the floor and a second, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to tip.
If not, I'll call a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's go to number 11, I'm not exactly sure what that means, remove the table, remove from the table.
Well, to talk about what we want to do with the work session meetings.
You need a motion to remove from the table.
I'll move that we remove it.
There's a motion to remove it, second by Thompson, all those, oh, any discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, I added, I'm adding 11B. I'm going to call Councilman Vasquez for just a moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I asked Mayor Hendrick if he would just give me a few minutes, I'd like to make some special presentations to Chief Gurke, if you'll come to the podium, and Cody Ritchie, in the absence of Chief Cotton, please.
Get me a little concerned.
You've got to be careful.
I'll be very careful.
I think my voice will carry, so, last week, I entered into a downtown business and was drawn to a couple of items that they had on a shelf, and it brought to my attention the law enforcement and our OFR. And my heart said, you got to purchase those items for those two people that are in the leadership positions for the, I mean, the police department and for OFR. And if you want to be like that, those little kids that you want to learn, you want to open up your gifts and show them to whoever you want to show them to.
Open them up, come on, guys, it's Christmas.
And I'm not a gift capital. I want to read what it says up here, it says, hope, peace, grace, police, and you want to get hope or something, and the Lord will guide you always. I hope that you'll find a place in your office, you put it up there on behalf of God, or for yourself, up on your staff. My name is Coach, I mean, Chief Cotton, again, this came, I mean, my heart just said, you got to get these to these two guys, so, anyway, please present yourself ahead.
Yes, sir, I will.
If you will.
Yes.
I need a motion to adjourn, do I? I need a motion.
We're going to talk about our.
11.
Meeting time.
Oh, yeah, you want to do that first.
Mainly.
All right. Sorry, I got carried away.
I'm wondering.
I just got carried away. All right, let's, let's move to section 11 now, I like everyone to be a lot better, let's go to 11. All right, so, Greg starts us off.
Well, I think at one point, we had talked about moving the work session from when we started today, because, you know, now we're running right into the council meeting, we had talked about visiting with everybody about the times they're available, what's convenient, and I know Mr. Mitchell had some concerns if we moved it to the morning, I know there are other considerations, so, that, that was the, the initial conversation, I know, with Mr. Morton, we talked about, could we incorporate some of the work sessions into the council agenda and just do away with the work session altogether? So, I, I think there's some merit to discussing, is 3:00 on Tuesday the best way to do this and just have a, I mean, marathon, yes, sir?
So, usually, this doesn't, work sessions don't usually go this long, this was an exception today, so, usually, we're in and out of these work sessions pretty quick. But today, we should, stuff that should have got put on the regular agenda got put on this agenda, and I was the cause of one of them, so, but, it is a, for me, Tuesday, one day is easy for me to do, I, I, you know, I have a lot of responsibility at work, so, and I ran for this before I got this job, so I apologize, so.
Okay, just go down, Greg, what's good for you?
I like it as it is, really, because if you, actually, if you, if you do it every week like we used to do, like, work session, then session, work session, then session, you're just, you know, you can do it like this and compress it, it works out better, but Councilman Haney is right, our work sessions have been running longer, this isn't, hadn't been the norm, and that could also be trimmed too, as to what goes on to the work session.
Okay, Gilbert, what's your thoughts?
I'm retired and flexible to what the majority wants to do. Whatever happens will be good with me.
Thank you, sir. Steve?
I'm retired too, same thing, except not before 8:30.
8:30, all right, Eddie, you've got a lunch schedule, I know, so.
If we can go 2:00, it's fine with me. I can't be here at 10:00.
Right, can't do mornings.
Yeah, I can't do mornings. And I know we, Mondays are free for me, but I can't do 10:00.
Okay.
I'm flexible.
So, you can put discussion items on the regular agenda, so, and maybe it's just a matter of pacing from staff on what you need to hear too. I don't, I mean, if you guys meet at 3:00, and, that makes for a long day for you guys, and I think we can shorten your day if we put some of these items on the regular agenda for discussion only, no action, you still hear the same thing, I mean, this is basically a council meeting here that started at 3:00. So, if y'all wanted a shorter meeting, that's fine, we can do that. If, if you're happy meeting at 3:00, so, and I've been gone a while, so, I didn't do work sessions like this, we just put everything on the agenda, discuss it, if there was a vote, put it on there for vote or action, but just get you the information that way. But if you like the work sessions, we can keep doing them, it's up to you.
And I think if we just cut our time down a little bit on the work sessions.
This, this, I promise you, this was a long work session.
Well, you weren't doing last week.
Yeah, last one went to about 6:00.
You missed last week.
Well, you got to get faster, Mayor.
There's a lot of stuff on the agenda.
You got it.
So, do all the work sessions start at 3:00, or do you start them later?
We started at 3:00, and then when we're done, you know, I like it because we get fed here too.
Well, now we're done with real reasons, okay.
Because we finally get to eat something, you know, I'm at work all day, and usually getting here, I'm still at work, and so.
At least three of us only have, have had two in our entire lives, I mean, we, sorry, we just started last, you know, two weeks ago, so, Richard, what I'm going to do is, I'm just going to have you and Norma talk about it, and y'all give, y'all come up with solutions for us, and let's try something, I mean, we'll keep the time the same, 3:00 on Tuesdays, but we'll just try a different way of running the agenda, or if you, if we come up with maybe a, I mean, there's a lot of city businesses going on right now, it just seems like it, so, we've got to do it, it's just, I don't know how to do it more efficiently, maybe, I don't have the answer for that, there seems like there's big agendas.
Okay, so, you're only doing one, you were only doing once a month work, I mean, yeah, once a month work sessions?
No.
Twice every month.
Okay.
Both on, both on council meetings?
Yeah, we would just stretch.
Twice, twice, twice.
If it was something that needed to go, it could go to the next one, but usually, we move pretty fast, we, we just had a lot of people in today to discuss.
Lot of speakers.
Sure.
And we usually don't do this on work sessions, we do that on normal city council meetings where we have everybody in.
Richard, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
When you were here before, did, did all the packets contain as detailed information as, as the one today was 259 pages?
Yes, yes, so, you guys need the information.
Oh, I know.
To be able to make the decisions that you, we ask you.
There's a way to compress it somewhat, but I know it's hard.
No, I, I think staff can, communication, right? So, if we're going to ask you to make a decision, we need to get you the information well in advance. So, it's okay to slow these decisions down so that you can make them, have some time to absorb the information, right, before we ask you to make a decision. If that means putting it on in advance, then we put it on in advance, let you talk about it, there's nothing wrong with that. I'm sure we've been doing that, hopefully, we've been doing that.
Well, I think, let's do, let's keep the meeting for now the same, if comes a problem,